I'd like to call to order the town council meeting of August 16th, 2022. The time is 7:02. We're in the Harvey Hearing Room. Call to order, roll call please.
Council Honing.
Here.
Council Pacillo. Council Munson.
Here.
Council Belcher.
Here.
Council DeMarco. Council Aiello.
Here.
Council Flockot.
Here.
Vice President Rujero.
Yeah.
President Lucchera.
Yeah. Before we go into the pledge, the Zoom phone number is 301-715-8592. The ID is 846-9263-5652. We'll ask us to rise for the pledge of allegiance, being led by Councilor Munson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes were circulated for the August 2nd meeting. Everyone has received them. Private motion to approve. Motion by Councilor Belcher, second by Councilor Flockot. Any discussions, additions, deletions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. General information and recommendations we are fortunate to have from brightly formerly school dude, Evan Barker and Luke. Luke, I don't know your last English.
Anderson.
Anderson. Thank you guys so much for being here with us tonight and giving us a brief presentation. I will turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, outstanding. Well, thank you first of all for having us. Really excited for the opportunity to talk with everybody, mainly about facilities, right? Current condition, where we need to go, what do we need to do to be successful? Most of the time Luke is going to be driving through the system here itself, giving me a little presentation that I can answer any logistical questions about procurement or moving forward or other folks in your neck of the woods that use it. So, please don't hold back. Luke, let me tap on him.
All right. Perfect. I'll be showing up here on the screen. I'm not loving the Zoom, so we'll be sharing there. But essentially, there's really three main parts to what is being proposed. The first is boots on the ground. We'll have folks that'll come in and walk through each building, identify what it is that you physically own, the air conditioning, the electrical systems, the fire alarm systems, the security systems, the paint, the floors, the ceilings, and essentially establish an inventory of what's owned, what condition is it in today, and how much is it going to cost when it does need to be replaced? So by identifying that inventory, we essentially know, you know, you might have $5 million, $10 million, $3 million worth of equipment. We're going to be taking that and putting it into, right here. Essentially, an inventory for the Tony and the Public Works team to manage and kind of take care of on a daily basis. So, once we establish the inventory, there's a couple of things that come along with it. From an operational standpoint, when you, you know, you've got generators, you've got pumps, you've got chillers and boilers, we're going to establish what it is that you do on a daily, monthly, weekly basis. So obviously, you know, if the council room here is too cold or too hot, you'll make a complaint and you'll get it fixed. But at the same time, the facilities team has to come in here on a yearly basis, if not quarterly basis, changing filters, checking the fire extinguishers, checking the fire lights, making sure everything's compliant, making sure everything's safe. So this is a schedule that establishes essentially, how much work do we have to do and how do we organize it? Right? How do we make sure the right people are going to the right place to get the work done? The other side to it is for exactly what I talked about a second ago. Right? The room is too cold, your office has a light that's out, there's a door lock that doesn't work, there's a rip in the carpet, there's a problem with an issue, right? We can come in and submit that so that you can communicate directly to the Public Works team, to the facilities team. They can come and fix it. Same goes for schools. Your school department's already doing this, right? They're already part of this process. They're on a little bit older version of the software, so we'll be moving them forward into a more kind of advanced state. But essentially, it gives a centralized place that everybody can handle their work and dispatch it. The final kind of piece, I want to come back to these assets. When we think about all your buildings and we think about all the equipment, we're also looking at these kind of three fields right there. Replacement date, replacement cost, and condition. So if it's in good condition now, right, it's going to last us 10 more years. Well, that'll kind of depend on how it works over the next 10 years. So if facilities is calling a vendor in every six months to replace another part, you're probably not going to keep it for, you know, 12 more years, right? You might replace it sooner. So it gives them a way to track it, gives them a way to keep up with it. And I'll pull up an example. Obviously, this is not your capital plan, but what it will create ultimately is a way to say, over the next three, four, five years, what assets do we need to replace? How much money do we need to spend based on the current condition of those pieces of equipment? So instead of saying, hey, we've got a roof that we have to do next year and we need 200 grand, right, we'll have an idea that that roof is probably coming four or five years before that last minute kind of purchase. So I want to give a very high level, just open up for general questions. I'm happy to show more. We can walk through some process or show reports, but I didn't want to open up to the council if you guys had any general thoughts or questions.
Thank you. So, and again, just to give everybody an idea, this is entailing every building in town over 500,000 square feet of commercial town property. This would involve the schools, it would involve the town, it would involve all the buildings in the town. I guess a question I have, and then I'll open it up for the council, but just to get started. If you're doing a facility like the, we have a football field, right, or an all purpose sports facility, is that something that you would monitor? Monitor the turf because they tell us it's an eight-year life and we should be, is that a piece of what you would do also?
So when we do an assessment, right, and we're looking at the structure itself, do you know specifically if any kind of?
So turf was not included in this for this particular scope? It would be anything like concessions or HVAC or anything like that would be looked at?
Okay.
And so, but the idea is that the asset itself doesn't matter. If you want us to collect the data, we can include that in the scope. Otherwise, the system itself that contains all of the list of equipment can add them wherever you want. So if you buy something new or you know the turf is five years old and it's got a 20-year lifecycle and you don't want to pay for us to evaluate it, which turf is, you don't necessarily need a mechanical engineer to evaluate turf, in my opinion.
Yep.
If you did want one, we can definitely supply it, but you know, your turf people can probably tell you what the lifecycle is and be able to give you that kind of evaluation. But I would ask you to add that to your database because that's what goes into that big list, that Excel file that tells you what the capital plan is.
I think it's a touch of way, all of their turf fields are in the system and they use it quite extensively for that as well.
And when you're giving a bid, are you giving a bid based on square footage? Are you giving a bid based on age of facilities?
Good question. So it's a mix, for the FCA, it is square footage only.
Facility condition assessment.
Yeah.
The actual walk-through is just square footage, yeah.
That will include number 10 on there, which is site paving, so things like pathways, parking lots, patio's, any kind of concrete padding, fountains, outdoor fixtures, things like that. The building exterior, but typically other than that, we're not doing evaluating fields unless it's added.
Vice President Rujero.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Could you just give us a little bit more information on what your scope of services would include? So you would help us build the database, you'd help us entering in all the data, you would do the walkthrough of each facility, and then your team would determine, you know, whatever the carpet, it's five years past, it's due day. You guys would make those determinations for the town or how would you kind of go with that? And is it the type of thing where you bundle it all up for us and then we manage it moving forward? Or is there like a consistent partnership as you go through?
Perfect. Two, a couple of parts to that.
Yeah, sorry, that was a little.
No, it's not a question. So the first part, in terms of the actual evaluation, so when we come in, these 12 items, these are the main areas. So when you think about any asset within those 12 areas, so when you think like commercial kitchen, you think about an elementary school, the ovens, the reach-ins, the walk-ins, right? But we're probably not putting up an $800 microwave on the list, right? What we'll do is we'll look at things at a system level. So carpet's a great example. So when we come into this building, we'll notice that there is X amount of square footage of carpet and X amount of square footage of maybe linoleum, tile, hardwood floor. And we'll say, hey, your hardwood floor at the front is in great condition. You've got about 1,000 square feet. Down here in the basement, you've got 2,000 square feet of carpet. Not good. We're not going to itemize every room.
Okay.
Right? But we're going to identify carpet as the whole system because more than likely, if you pay for a vendor to come in here, you're not just replacing carpet here, right? You're going to replace all the carpet in the whole building. So we're going to look at it as a building kind of, of system.
Got it.
Once we do that and we load it in, not only are we putting into the software, but we're actually training his team to manage on a daily basis. Now, you guys on the council, you may eventually have questions about that. And I'll show you some kind of preview of that real quick. But it's questions like, you know, of all the things that we did last month, how many of them did we do on time? If somebody made a complaint, did we correct that problem within seven days or not? Right? And ideally, we want to be in that 90 to 95% range, right? And that's the idea of tracking the activity, which is now managing the assets. So now, we've come out here and over the past two years, we've repaired the boiler in this building eight times and it's costing $5,000.
Right.
Well, if that's a $20,000 chiller, do we really want to keep it another 10 years? Or should we look at maybe replacing it? So the management of the system actually comes through the use of the system by the maintenance team. But we do provide all the implementation, the support, the training for.
Yeah. From a holistic view, we're establishing the baseline of everything you've got, training you on how to use the system. We're actually going to come back onsite a second time to train everybody how to use the system. And then from there, if there's any problems, you give us a call, we'll help you out with whatever you need.
Thank you.
Council Honing.
So you mentioned for the initial assessment, do you send out a team of experts, you know, in plumbing and electrical? And I noticed you guys are MBAs and not saying you guys don't know your job.
Yeah. I'm not an MBA. I'm an FMP, I'm a facilities guy. So I got my start in HVAC. Yeah. But yeah, so we, it's typically it's going to be on the mechanical side. Sometimes we'll get civil involved, but what they're doing is they're taking pictures, they're evaluating, they're assessing everything. That data is then taken from field data and sent back to the home office from the engineering standpoint. People look at it and they say, wait a minute, there's a 27-year-old boiler that's rated excellent? That doesn't make any sense. They're going to kind of QA QC it, and then that's what gets put into your system. And that's actually a question I forgot for you. It is not, we do not take the evaluation and then input it. We're going to take the evaluations and we're going to send them to the team. And essentially, we really want their feedback.
Do you do an IQO, KQ, or a validation of the system once it's installed?
No. So we're not going to do any air quality, we're not going to do any commissioning. There's not any type of evaluation of air pressures or movement.
I'm sorry, the system itself. So do you validate the software system once it's installed? Do you do like test scripts and that sort of thing and testing to make sure it works as designed or worked as, you know, per your user specification?
We can. So we do have a sandbox account that you guys can set up and test before you move into production. The system itself, it's called Asset Essentials. It is a software as a service, it's a web-based platform. There's about 3 million active users. There's about 12,000 active accounts. So it is something that, you know, if you guys have a problem, everybody in the world has that problem and we know about it for sure.
We have an account manager that we can contact for that.
Exactly.
Project manager, actually, we dedicate from the moment you say go to fully live. That will be handholding the entire way.
When things are due for calibration or service, does the system send automatic emails or automatic alerts to multiple, say, head of DPW or Tom Martin?
Exactly right. Yep. So it'll depend on the type of asset, on who gets the alert. There are some situations on certain types of alerts, we want everybody to know. Other types of alert, just certain people need to know. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. To piggyback on that, outside vendors can be notified as well. City of Land actually has a bunch of stuff in their contracts that say, you must use this software if you want to do business with the city of land. So be worked in.
Thank you.
Of course.
Council Munson.
Thank you, Council President. So thank you guys for coming and this is great information. Apparently, it's working for the school already, so it's obviously comes well respected and that's why you're here. But would you just give us a little background information about the company, the software, the age of it? How many clients do you have? Will you be around in the future kind of thing? So, and then also the nature of the agreement? Is it a, the startup and then?
Gotcha.
I know that's a lot.
No, you're fine. 1999 is when we started. Started as school dude back then. We're no longer school dude, we're brightly software. Roughly 12,000 clients throughout the US, 80% of that being either local school districts or a municipality. Looking at a map here, Boston uses us, Chelsea, Melrose, Malden, Saugus, Lynn. So we're, we've been around for quite a while and particularly in the Northeast.
As far as the iteration of software, you know, there's like 3.1. Where are you at with those?
I'm like relying on the big guy here, tech guy. I was trying to find a slide, but I think Evan covered it, but I have, oh, here we go.
Yep, there you go.
Here's just a graphic that just kind of walks through just the presence. The red is public sector, the blue and yellow are our private sector. We break our private sector into healthcare and non-healthcare. So we are mostly based in the public sector. About four years ago, we acquired a couple of companies in England and in Australia, so this is just the US. This map shows about 8,000 clients, the rest are overseas.
So it sounds as though you guys are like one of the top softwares for this type of service, but would you say, who are your competitors and how would you differ from them?
Sure. There's a ton of them out there, right? There's a million work order softwares. I think the difference comes in when we're talking about more than just ticketing, right? Ticketing is, I have a problem here, right? What we do is asset management. I have this many assets, here is their current condition, and here is how they're being affected by the day-to-day operations of what we're doing. In that space, there's not many. You could look at, you know, a.
Hippo FM. Maintenance connection email. There's a few out there.
Some custom build stuff.
And on the technical side, there's another group of competitors. It depends on what type of market we're talking about because obviously, we plan on a bunch of different ones. So there's different people in education. In the government market and in the municipal world, there's a lot that has to do eventually as you expand into DPW and expand into the operations of street and sewer and storm, stormwater, everything else, there opens up a whole other door. City Works, Cartograph, there's a lot of companies in that, in this space.
SAP, yeah.
SAP, Oracle, IBM has a program. Let me get too deep into it, but there's a number of differentiators. Typically, what it comes down to is simplicity, ease of use. Typically, the folks that are using it when they're out there and they're saying, hey, I have to go fix the air conditioner and they got to put in the data. If it's not easy for them to put in the data, it doesn't really work.
I think at the end of the day, the biggest difference though is probably none of them can name five people in Massachusetts and I just named out seven of your neighbors. So I mean.
That's cool. We appreciate it. Well, it sounds great, guys. Council Flockot.
Thank you, Council President. We have a program in place that I guess is one of these job ticket programs. The name of it.
It's run through our hosting platform and it's Seek, Click, Fix, something like that. And that DPW uses that.
How does that compare to this? I mean, what's.
It has more to do with infrastructure potholes and things like that. This is more our buildings and assets that we own that we need, are responsible to maintain and take care of. So that's a different. The other towns that I worked in had similar setups through DPW for, you know, reporting systems and other software. This was more facilities-based and taking care of our buildings and infrastructure.
Okay.
And in the future, we are partners with Seek, Click, Fix. So if you guys did want to bring the systems together, that's totally feasible.
Council Aiello. So a couple of follow-ups. One was on the typical term of a contract with your municipality. I don't think you got to.
Yeah, absolutely. So the initial term gets us through July 1st of next year, at which point it's an annual renewal moving forward. We've got the first term built out with three annual renewals built in. So that gets us through 2025.
Okay. And when, if a decision were made to not renew, the data, the software program, et cetera, is owned by the municipality?
Absolutely. It's always your data, no matter what.
Data and software as well?
No, sorry. It is a software as a service. So the renewal every year.
So we would have to take the data and dump it into something else? And do we have the rights to ask you to facilitate that dump of data from you to a competitor at the appropriate time? Have you been through that process of changing?
I haven't switched from them. Switched to them, but I haven't switched from them. So, yeah, but I'm, yeah.
You've gone through that process.
Absolutely. I've been through it a few times, yeah.
Any real software there, any real software, up-to-date software, CSV is going to be the way you import and export data and we do it in the CSV format. Yes, sir.
I'm seven years old, so I don't know what you're talking about. I just wanted to. He says we can do it.
The way we bring it in is the same way we push it out. So when we bring it in, we have to make it into a neutral language so that everybody can use it. So then when we push it out, it's in the same language.
I get that.
And the second part of your question, there's a non-appropriation clause built in to all of our stuff. So if you don't budget for it, you don't have to pay for it. We're not blocking you out.
Okay. And then in terms of the actual asset management, so you're doing the valuation, does the data that come out automatically feed into operating and capital plans? So in other words, we get an operating budget coming up for next year, you will distinguish between what's operating versus capital in your judgment and then give us sort of a five-year trend on each building so we can build a five-year capital plan around each of those facilities and cumulatively? I assume that's one of your key outputs?
So you nailed it.
Okay.
So that's the whole idea and.
And, and then, okay, no, that's good to know. And then when you're looking at carpeting as an example, and you decide, okay, we need to replace carpeting, how does that go about? Are you doing that directly? Are you picking vendors? Are we seeing competitive bidding among two or three vendors? How do you go about actually fixing the stuff with direct workforce or third parties?
Right. So we're going to provide you a valuation and a timeline. It'll be up to your facilities team to actually facilitate the install and the procurement of it.
Okay.
So that valuation on the timeline though, that will be editable and manageable by anybody, right? If you guys look at this, you know, pull up that spreadsheet and you say, you say, hey, you know, we're looking at 2025 and I've got $170,000 for exterior work. And we say, well, wait a minute, the cost of party board has gone up by 40% in the past six months, right? That can be adjusted and projected forward based on that adjustment. So that's something that does, it does require a little bit of an active hand by their group, but that's the whole part of using the system is that they're kind of in that, doing that every day.
And then do you do acceptance of the work on behalf of the community for, say, the installation of carpet? Or is that something that still rests with the municipality?
Yep.
Okay. And then I assume the update, that then goes into excellent condition and then you give that a 10-year lifecycle, whatever it is, and it sort of repeats itself.
Reset that timeline.
All right. I'll pass on to them. You're giving us all the tools. The onus is still on us to follow through and pay for everything and make sure we have a capital plan.
He wouldn't have invited us if we did everything he said because then he wouldn't have a job. Yeah. Unfortunately, software can't separate. Yeah. There's still a human factor to it.
Of course.
Of course.
And that's actually something that's very important because when we come and evaluate and we say that your carpet is new and we assume a 12-year lifecycle or we say your roof has a 25-year lifecycle, right? You know, the weather here is different than it is in Houston or Seattle or Grand Rapids, right? So we're going to take that into account, but at the end of the day, that's what they're doing is they're inspecting that roof every year. And when they go out there and they say, man, this thing's got water log and it's got leaks and it's got bubbling and we're going to change it from good condition to poor condition because it's deteriorated a lot faster than we thought, the whole way is to give them that database, give them that avenue to do that.
And so a last question, just is something be worth seeing if we could see it? So as an example, every year, we just simply approve the budget for the school department and they go off, but we have no direct oversight, we don't manage it, et cetera. But a portion of that is operations and maintenance, a portion of that is capital spend. But we would never see the actuals at the end of the year, right? Because by the time we start a new budget process, the year isn't over quite there yet, et cetera. So we have no idea about the transfers that might happen from a budgetary responsibility that the council has. There are automatic reports that would show year on year what should have happened, what was budgeted against that, because maybe not all of it was budgeted because we couldn't afford it, but we could see the differential. And then from the approved budget, what was actually spent in those categories as opposed to transferred to other needs within the town? Because it would lead to a deterioration of the asset, right? If we're not appropriating the amount of money the school department buildings need or any building needs, that's a red flag. And then if you're not actually spending it during the course of the year but diverting it to other sources, that's a double red flag, right? So do your reports make it easy for sort of an auditing-oriented council to see the data?
So in the project area, when there is a capital project, they'll establish what that budget is. And then as they execute it, they'll log what those purchase or labor costs are associated to that budget, whether it's vendor or internal. In terms of the actual assets that get replaced, we can essentially set, on the dashboard, you can establish the, what are called my reports, which will essentially say, I've set certain filters for certain types of data and I want it to go to certain people. So if you would like a report, maybe on a quarterly basis, that shows all of the assets that were reset or all the assets that were created new, that could be something that would be sent to you automatically.
And we can see a comparison to what the original recommendation for the spend was for preventative maintenance or scheduled maintenance or any of that.
I think the kind of the key is as long as you guys have the data and you want to track it, there is a place for it. The question gets to the limitation of how much input are we going to ask their team to do on a daily basis? Because the more time it's spent on the computer, the less time they're spending turning wrenches.
Yeah. And again, from my perspective, a semi-annual view of things typically would be enough. I don't want to speak for the whole council, but for me, you know, that would be enough. Okay.
There's a tender line to walk between the types of reports and data that we want to extrapolate and the amount of effort we ask the operations team to input. Because we, I mean, I've got, you know, international airports that use this that are dealing with FAA compliance where their team spends 15 minutes per work order putting in data because they have to capture every little thing that's involved. At the same time, if your guys are spending 15 minutes, they're probably going to, they're probably not going to like it. They're probably going to say no and they're not going to do it. And then we kind of, we're back to square one.
Yeah. Vice President Rujero.
Just a real quick follow-up. So we talked about the data coming and you said that you would help train us all, but with your other municipality clients, who are the usual folks to be inputting the data as this thing progresses and five years down the line, you know, we have a new, you know, police station or whatever, you know? So who, like, who are the typical users? Because we want clean data going in, right? Going aggregated going in or otherwise, what comes out is meaningless. So who usually does that?
Piece of the pie. So everybody has a little piece. So it all starts typically with what we call the requestor. The requestor is, could be a citizen, it could be an internal employee, but it's somebody that says, hey, I have a problem.
Okay.
From there, it typically goes to some sort of administrator or supervisor that is either going to approve or deny it and then send it off to a actual worker that is going to execute the work. That's the final piece of the puzzle is the actual maintenance technician. So in most cases, we're splitting the workload of data entry. The supervisor's putting in a little bit and the tech is putting in a little bit. And we want to kind of weigh that same line of how much the tech has to put in versus how much the super has to put in. But that's usually how it's broken down. And you can see there's a lot more kind of breakouts, so you can customize that and configure So you can customize that and configure who, who's going to be involved with the work and how do they get notified.
Got it. So, so there's a check in place so that an individual couldn't, you know, flood the system, so to speak, okay? So it's, it's like a dual authentication, you need someone else to approve the, okay, got it.
And your account administrator will always have the ability, let's say you've got a disgruntled employee, comes in and sends a thousand work orders, they can go in and just with one click just-
Just a really motivated person, who really likes the system and wants that, you know?
A whole lot of time, which happens.
Because, I mean, if we're driving budgeting decisions, that's sort of what I, you know, trying to get at here.
Council Valcha?
Um, just a quick question about the cost structure. Does that change with the number of assets, the number of projects, the number of users? How is that impacted?
That's a great question. It's based off population and student count, and you guys are right smack dab in the middle of the bracket, so it won't, it won't be changing.
Thank you.
So, another financial question?
Yep.
So i- i- if we were to engage you, what are the costs in order to populate the system with accurate data? Because on, we've got a historic building down the other end that we all sort of shrug and have no idea what condition it's in, right? Except it's lousy. But there's a lot of that in this town, um, for better or worse, right? So what other spend should we expect to have to commit to in order to do the initial upload of building condition?
With us?
What sits outside of your contract? In other words, are you responsible for looking at every single building, climbing through it, and doing all that directly? Are you expecting that for some as, subset of assets, we're gonna bring other firms involved and do other things?
It was included in that five hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet, we're doing every single one of these items to every-
Do full evaluation of every building?
And it's not new, you know, Massachusetts is an old state, and we've done one, you know, quite a few of these states. So we see a lot of, a lot of older buildings. Fencing, irrigation, those are things that are not gonna get done. You know, if you have historic trees or historic statues, those are not included. Everything you see on this list, you know, within the confines of that is going to be included, yeah. Um, and, and there is a detailed scope that we can, I think we've probably sent it, we can forward it over, um, that literally goes through every asset type that is or isn't included.
Great, thank you.
Well, we run the gamut from a six-year-old middle high school to a hundred and twenty-five-year-old firehouse, so you'll have your work cut out.
We did four hundred, uh, four hundred, uh, uh, they, macro pumps at the Port of Huineen in California, because they pump the fish off the side of the ships into the holding tanks. And we had to call in a specialist from Washington, because, you know, if they do fish out in Washington, we have no idea. So it's, we've seen it.
I appreciate it. Uh, Tony, did you have anything?
Well, yeah, can you just talk a little bit about, because one of the breakouts in there is, uh, one of the things we found beneficial is the, uh, can you talk about the barcode tagging?
Sure, absolutely. So while we're doing the evaluation, so while we're physically walking through each, um, structure, any major asset, so think large pieces of HVAC equipment, that thing up there, maybe even the room itself, depending on what you guys want, we're gonna, we're gonna physically put a barcode on it. So depending on how you guys want barcode, so some pieces of equipment, it makes sense to put a physical tag on the piece of equipment. Other pieces of, doesn't make any sense, all right? If I put a physical tag on that, he's gonna have to get a ladder to scan it, right? So what we do is we will make up a book of assets for a building. Um, but essentially, we're creating asset barcode tags. Uh, there is a mobile app that I did not get into, I'm happy to show you guys what it looks like, I'll need to log into Zoom to project it. Uh, but it's a mobile app for his team, that when they're in the field, they can scan that barcode, scan that QR code, and essentially pull up the information about that piece of equipment. Um, so maybe they walk into this council room and they scan the barcode on the side of the room. They'll know, you know, you know, is there any light bulbs that need to be changed, are there any problems in this room? Or maybe they scan the, the barcode for that, that air conditioner, they'll know the last time it broke, you know, how they fixed it, what they need to repair, and things like that. Or walk up to a major asset, see a boiler, and be able to pull up schematics, diagrams, anything like that associated with that asset.
All right. Well, can't thank you guys enough, I appreciate it, for, uh, taking the time and flying into Winthrop, and, um, we will be in touch shortly.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming, guys. Really appreciate it. Thanks, Justin.
Thanks, y'all. Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Public hearings, we have none. Public comment, I'm sure we do have some. So we just, we will do public comment tonight, we'll do in-house, then we'll go to Zoom. We'll give everyone, individual, three minutes, and, uh, we'll stop this, then we'll go to the Zoom and get everyone's public comment that wants to speak. Who would like to be first? Now we'll close public comment, oh, sorry.
No, that's an answer.
Nice try. Any public comment in the room about anything? Yes, name and precinct, just, name and precinct, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne Hohman, uh, precinct six. Um, the tree was on, Somerset Tree was on the agenda this morning, and I hear it was not on the agenda later in the day. Is it still on your agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was not on the agenda.
So I'm here in, um, my capacity as a citizen, as a member of the tree committee, and as a board member of the nonprofit group with Love Trees. And we've been following this tree, and this debate for a really long time. And, uh, so it's coming up, I think, for a vote, and we think it's just, you know, it's postponed. One, just one, one point is that, that's, you know, people saying, Jesus, it's been going on for so long, we support people, it's been eight months. Well, the town council put a moratorium in place until the ordinance was passed, and then we would come back and revisit it. Well, we're here, and so I heard, uh, tell that this may be exempt from our ordinance, but it was suspended so that it would be in place when this came up, so I'm a little confused about that. And, and so I just want to speak for the trees. We need them, this tree is healthy, um, they mitigate pollution, they provide, you know, a defense against climate change. It's really important that we have a mindset that we're not gonna take down trees, um, that are healthy, that we need to find every solution possible to keep, to keep our trees, to keep our urban canopy. And, you know, I heard that there may be a passage issue, and the bump outs are too expensive, but I think, um, it's more costly to take these trees down, because it affects our public health. It's not just one person in front of one house, it's the entire community that's impacted by, by the trees. So that's my two cents, and so I hope that you, you know, look at the bigger picture. It's not just one individual and one, you know, tree, it's, it's all of us.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Anyone else would like to speak? Jack?
Thank you. Good evening.
Jack Dogg, precinct-
Jack Dogg, precinct, Jack Dogg, precinct three. Happy about the progress the town has made to improve the tree state. Happy for the reasons, another list here, seventy-five thousand dollars from the foundation. And I want to thank the foundation for that money. Fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars from the revenue received from the illegal taking down of the trees at the Atlantis. Whatever money is left to, to go to the width of tree committee from the money raised, from David Green and Ramona Cooper donations. And the usual money that the town is obliged to spend for the planting of trees on an annual basis. So that, that's a lot of money compared to the last previous years. And it's, and it's a very good start, but I just wanted to continue. I don't want to continue cutting down trees. I've noticed very large trees that were cut down in the last couple of years, basically for no reason. I, I don't remember seeing posted trees, and I went by the trees on a daily basis for the last five years. So I don't know what happened to that, I don't want to investigate it, but I just happened to go by the trees on a daily basis, and all of a sudden, one day, they were gone. So I, you know, I've, as a tree warden, I've seen trees disappear over a weekend, so I know what happens. It happened a long time ago, and it can still happen now, in, in the future, people just take trees down. And I, I'm awful, I'm also grateful to Paul O'Donnell for hiring an expert group to determine the value of the Atlantis trees. That has been determined by a person employed by the town, Paul O'Donnell, and a professional high-risk group. Hope that money gets spent on trees, nothing else. Concerning the, uh, the tree at one ninety Somerset, um, there's been so much debate here. I'm not gonna be late with the point too much, I have three minutes, that's it. I want to get to Councilor Alaj Demakko. Well, two years ago, I asked him, uh, about, if he had any concern about the, um, land adjoining Cumberland Farms. It, it's a blighted area, they took down a house there, it's a gravel pit, dirt, glass, rocks, weeds, et cetera. I'm still waiting for a reply. He said he was gonna get one for me. If anybody else has an interest in that land looking better than what it does now, I wish somebody would take up that issue. I asked Mr. Demakko to take up the issue, and, uh, I'm still waiting for an answer from him. The last text I got, and I haven't talked to Mr. Demakko since that time.
You just start to wrap up?
Thank you.
It's fine.
Three more sentences.
That's fine.
Thanks. The last text I got from Mr. Demakko about a month ago is, if it was his concern at a meeting two, uh, last month, that the tree would be coming down, that's the last text I got from Mr. Demakko. But he didn't offer any alternatives. There's been much research done by a lot of people in, in this room, in this town, employees of the town, about alternatives to taking this tree down. Some of the alternatives are a bump out. I'd like to see a scope of work, two hundred thousand dollars has been mentioned as, as a figure to bump out one car space. It just doesn't seem plausible. I'd like to see a scope of work, and I'd like to see three bids, uh, to review how much it really does cost to do a bump out there. And then there's an alternative, uh, you wanna bump in? Many people have done that. Also, you're looking at pitches that I, I provided, uh, to all of you. There's many ways to get around the tree, across the street.
You'd have to wrap up, Jeff.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, I want to hear what Jack has to say.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue with my next three, uh, in my next, uh, public comment, I have three minutes left, thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, Frank?
Frank Costantino, precinct two, uh, just to reiterate this issue regarding the tree at, uh, Somerset Ave. It seems to me that there is a, a mindset that really needs to be, uh, brought to some collective decision-making, uh, having to do with the value of the tree itself, what that tree as a living organism, uh, brings as benefits to our community, not only just for that neighborhood, but for the entire town. And the age of that tree, which also is substantial, it should be looked at as a senior member of our community, right? I mean, that's really something, how we look at this particular tree, what its survival capacity might be for another fifty, a hundred years, perhaps? I mean, trees do have that kind of presence, that do have that kind of continuity, and that is something that I think needs to be taken into account. As far as maneuvering around the tree itself, as Jack has mentioned, and perhaps other, other of you have thought about, there are ways to get around that, and there's been precedents being done in other communities, uh, in, that we can evaluate, means for pedestrian passage around that tree, is still making it attractive looking, and not run into an expense that is up in the air, from what Jack had said, uh, which seems totally unreasonable. Proceeding in a logical manner is a, an appropriate way to go, and keeping the public informed about what's going on, uh, on as well. Uh, the other thing I want to remind you about is that, uh, about a year ago now, uh, with Bob Carroll and the planning board, there were fifty people addressing this issue online, all of whom, the majority of whom, ninety percent of whom, objected to that tree coming down, or approved the tree being retained. And I think you need to keep that in mind. There are a lot of people in the town that are aware of this issue, and for whatever justifiable reason for expense, because nobody's mentioned what the cost is for taking down the tree, okay? And, and the, uh, perhaps the difficulties that, you know, Steve Keller or a vendor would encounter in taking down the tree is something that hasn't been looked at, or the public hasn't been informed about it. Nonetheless, the value of that one tree, and the, the decision that this town council makes about that one tree, could set a very poor precedent. For one, one disgruntled homeowner to say that a public tree should come down, because, you know, it, it's, it's possibly a danger, doesn't make any sense at all. That opens up the door for any other homeowner to come in and say, this tree is very bothersome in front of my, in front of my house, or my street, we want to take it down. So I think you have to be very, very careful in making a decision about this tree. A, the positive sides of it are that it's, it's a healthy tree, it's a magnificent tree, it's providing, uh, healthy benefits to the community, and there are ways around the slight problem of traversing the side, or the public sidewalk around it. So I would suggest that you decide in favor of retaining the tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And I must say, you, you've spoken publicly before, because you were two minutes and fifty-eight seconds. That was incredible.
Please remember Chris Syke, I was here pretending before, very full house about Chris Syke, okay? And all of this is being driven by his passion for these trees, and the larger canopy of the town, and the fact that Winthrop was at one time a Winthrop Love Trees public community.
Thank you, yes.
Morning, we have this precinct five. I'm in a butter to, um, is now called Fisherman's Bend, which is really called the beach. And a few years ago, a neighbor did not like the fact that, um, trees were blocking his view of the harbor, and took it upon himself to cut down the trees. And he was fined four thousand dollars. Never saw that money go back into trees, but saw it go back into the general fund. And I want to make sure that if any trees are cut, which I don't want, that that money, that that person gets fined for, goes back into a specific fund for trees and vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good comment. Anyone else?
Suzanne.
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 Suzanne Smoke, precinct four. I really think this is an attitude about trees. It's, it's not just this tree, it's whether we think that these trees are valuable. And not those small trees we're putting in, which are wonderful, but the larger, the bigger trees that we have that really do provide a canopy, they provide, uh, they help pollution, they are, they support wildlife, they store carbon. They do a lot of things for this town. And I, I was happy to be in Brooklyn today, and I guess it's just so beautiful to see that you can work around these trees, because they have done that many times. And just the feeling about a neighborhood that has a tree canopy is so very different, you all, than what we have on many of these streets, including ones I travel on and hang out on often. So I, I hope you will think really carefully about this tree, because I know two other people that want to take down a tree, because they don't like that tree. It's on-street property, there's nothing wrong with the tree, but they don't happen to like that tree. This can't go on, you all. We, if we do this, it would set a terrible precedent, please keep this tree. And it reminds me of a song, actually. I, I told my brother, I was coming here, I said, oh, I know you remember that Joni Mitchell song. The Joni Mitchell song about they paved paradise, and they put up a parking lot. There was one line in that song that I really loved. It said, "They took all the trees and put them, you know, trees, you know, and then charged an arm and a leg to seal them."
See, when you're my age, it's the counting crows who sang that song.
Well.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yes.
I can do a poll on the, the tree committee, um, here in Winthrop, and I just want to say, as far as the species of the tree, uh, it's a, um, a pin oak. They're, um, straight, nice straight trunks, are very good with compaction, shallow, fibrous root system. And, uh, they're really considered a very good street tree, and they're strong, they have very good attachments to the trunk. And just as an example, at the top of Bartlett Road, right where Orlando Ave is, there's probably a northern red oak that's maybe a hundred and thirty years old. That tree's been there a hundred and thirty years, hasn't harmed anybody. You know, oaks are good, strong trees. If it, if it was a Norway maple, I'd say take it down tonight, if it was a poplar. You know, there's a big difference, this, this isn't, you know, a, a small, you know, calorie pair, or a, you know, weak-wooded tree, like a willow that causes problems with sewer systems. It's a tree worth saving, you know? And I also implore the, implore the town to spend some money on their canopy. I don't really see us spending any money, and it's, it's nothing against anybody in this room, but there's obviously a lot of people in town that want to see a tree canopy. You know, we live right next to the airport, you know, the houses are turning black because of the fumes. Alls we want is, is, is a decent tree canopy in town, and the town to take notice and spend a little money on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, here. You can tell he's an arborist tree. Did you see the signs you put on it? Please don't touch me?
Oh, God.
Any other comments? Yes?
Diane Yon, uh, precinct two. So I, I'm gonna go off-book, which I should never, ever do, but, um, thank you, Tim, for, I ran into you the other day when I was running, and you were watering all of our trees. So thank you for caring. Paul O'Donnell, thank you for, like, asking for this wonderful report about the Atlantis trees. Jack, thank you for being like a very strong supporter of our trees as the former tree warden, and everyone, oh my gosh, I can't even. But like, the tree ordinance, Tracy, Joanne, it's, it's wonderfully representative of our community's values today. And that is what we've shared in a very, nobody makes new laws here anymore, it's very difficult to do, but we did that. And that's because this is very important to us. Why are trees are important to us, right? Why do we want to stop Bartlett from becoming what it, unfortunately, taking down all the trees that were there before? The pollution, the, the, the quality of the, of the, um, of our even way of living, the, the heat islands that it creates when we take these things down. We just went through this enormous heat wave, it was awful. Did you sit under a tree? Did you enjoy the difference in temperature? When you even walked under one, did you, did you pause and understand the difference in the temperature that you experienced? This is the public tree, one ninety Somerset. It is very exaggerated with respect to the damage that is, that it is causing. Unfortunately, we have a, a very confused situation now due to different varying concerns that have been raised, but it's, it's not the issue that's before this council here today. The issue that's before this council here today is do we have an ADA issue that is causing potential liability? Hopefully, you'll understand that this requires some more thought. And really, we are, we're looking to credible sources at this point. I, I know that there is a, a, a three-packet report that's been submitted to this town council about- is a three-packet report that's been submitted to this town council about, you know, what arborists think about this report. We have two actual arborists in the room today, and another one that submitted a report to this town council, there's Pathfinder. Pathfinder is a tree removal service. I have their invoices here today. I didn't get enough time to highlight all of the invoices from Pathfinder today after I got off work, but I have my highlighter, and I'll sit here while you guys talk, and keep doing that, and I'll hand it to you after the meeting. But I want you to understand that we're interested in keeping our trees going forward. We didn't like our trees going down, and our Christmas tree going down, and our town center. And as a general principle, we'd like to keep these big, beautiful trees going forward.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else in the room? Yes?
My name is Tom Niren. I'm on the Tree Committee in Precinct Three. We've talked about trees, but they are an indication of a much, much bigger problem that the town is going to have to face. The trees are an indicator, and how we deal with the trees will indicate how we approach the giant problem of how our coastal community deals with climate change. It would be an enormously expensive thing, will require thinking in many disciplines, coastal geology, meteorology, climatology, coastal erosion engineering, and the biggest ones are social and financial. No one's going to come along and rescue us from the sea-level rise. This is something we're going to have to do ourselves, like we're going to have to plant our own trees and take care of our own trees, or we're going to have to take care of our own coastline. So the trees indicate a much bigger way we are going to approach this much larger problem that is going to seriously affect our town. What do we do with particular houses that may be destroyed by a storm? Do we rebuild them? Do we lift them? Do we encourage people to move? How do we pay for that? Do we take out bonds? It's an enormous problem, and it's going to take a long time and a lot of people to solve. Trees are the beginning.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Also an arborist.
Any other comment in the room? Seeing none, we will go to Zoom.
Marian, Marian Fiore. You on you?
We'll go to somebody else, and then we'll come back if she can.
No.
No.
Nobody's coming through?
Yeah. They can hear us, they're not coming through.
They could call, couldn't they? You know?
Mm-hmm.
How long does it take to reboot it?
Just halfway through.
Just halfway through.
Okay.
Testing, testing. Hi, it's Marian, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know what happened. Anyway, I'll try to be brief and not too repetitive. I'm commenting on the 190 Somerset tree removal, and just want to make a couple of points. First of all, I know there was great reports circulated. I hope that the town council will disregard the report by Pathfinder, because it was so blatantly biased. It not only lacked professional standards in both content and form, but as Diane mentioned, Pathfinder is a vendor for Winter, which obviously compromises the integrity of the report further. Based on the other two reports that met the professional ISA risk assessment standards, they both attested to the good health of this tree, and neither recommended the removal of it as the only solution. Only the Arway report noted that the only way to eliminate any risk is to completely remove the tree, but you can say that for any mature tree. So the reports did recommend pruning and regular inspection, so I obviously urged the town to do that expediently, to give those homeowners peace of mind, and to commit to a regular inspection of that tree. Finally, there seemed to be a lot of concern at the last time this was discussed about liability issues. And I saw the KP Law attorney opinion. Unfortunately, it seemed to only give general guidance, and I understand why. But if the liability is the reason that the town council decides to cut down this tree, then given the broader implications, I would strongly encourage the town council to defer the vote tonight, and to engage experts, be it ADA, or be it, you know, KP Law, or others who are, you know, versed in this kind of situation. So I'm hoping the tree doesn't come down, but, you know, I understand your caution and consideration, and I don't envy your position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Hart.
Yes, hi, everyone. My name is Stacy Hart. I work at the New England ADA Center. I was asked to come in and make a general comment about the ADA in relation to this tree. And it's only a general comment or two, because I haven't seen the properties. And I can't speak beautifully, as all of you have already done so. But the ADA Section 521 CMR and the tree can potentially live side by side. The ADA does not automatically require that a tree be cut down. There may be another solution to providing access that would save the tree and provide access to people with disabilities, as well as other community members. So I would urge the town to look at those options before making a decision because of the tree, and also, long-term, start planning, long-term, for access through the town, whether it be sidewalk or other places that need to be altered. And so there is this grant that you might have heard of, from the lawsuits at the Office on Disability, that the town could potentially apply for, to look at creating a self-allegation and addressing access issues. So creating a long-term plan, reacting with information as opposed to fear of being sued.
Thank you very much, Stacy.
Mike, can we use some? On you, Mike?
All these chairs, Denise, still can concentrate.
I can't, I cannot.
Good evening. I'm Luisa, Precinct Five, currently speaking solely as a resident and homeowner in all their capacity. Tree 190 Somerset is on the council's agenda again this evening, four hundred and thirty-six days after discussion of this matter began through committee meeting of June seven, twenty twenty-one, which was roughly a year before the town's passage of recent tree orders. Tree still stays there, with the fruits continuing to cause damage to my property. Is still pushing up the sidewalk at the bottom of my stairs, pushing the model level, bringing an ever closer being unsafe address. Dead branches still hang over my yard. Power lines are still touching live branches, and the ADA violation remains. Twenty-eight days ago at the council's July nineteenth meeting, the town manager confirmed when I first told the council via the Tree Committee over fourteen months ago. When Somerset Ave was reconstructed after a project in 2011, the sidewalk on the entirety of the street from Johnson to Pleasant was replaced, and required re-violated to be stepped by the ADA, and it was not. He sat in the room you were all in, and told you, the state's architectural access board confirmed the current situation as a violation of ADA standards, that the town could be fined in the area of one thousand dollars per day due to the violation, and that the town should have taken the tree down in 2011. He told you all that if someone would file a complaint with the architectural access board over the filing lawsuit, the town would lose. Sidewalks are public, still leased under the law. You still have the three hours before the town has ever guarded a tree, and it should be ADA violation. These reports confirm the damage to my property caused by this tree, stating it is an invasive root system, and it has potential to fail within the year. It's unfortunate that some trees sometimes uproot their spaces, since what happens here. The town has already spent money repairing due to this tree. Within the last five years, section of storm drain lines started in front of 184 Somerset, crossing Press Square, ending in front of 190 Somerset, had to be replaced. The storm drains in the intersection were backing up during heavy rains. When I spoke to BPW Operations Manager during these repairs, I was told that the reason the drain line had to be replaced was because treedrives grew into the line and blocked it completely. Allowing this treeder abandon, these roots to continue to damage my property is no different than if the town sent someone with a hammer and just hit the same spot on my wall each day and caused similar damage. In either case, the town is willfully damaging my property, which it simply cannot do. The town has been informed that the conditions created by the tree have caused damage to at least two vehicles, and have injured at least two people. The council has provided a photo of where the president, a walker, attempted to get past this tree, but went back to the car after leaving my home. There's a vast difference between a tree such as this, which is causing property damage, and is a violation of the law, and a tree which is a simple inconvenience, such as when someone wants to wipe and drive away. There has been concerns voiced by some people that this decision the council makes regarding this issue could set a precedent, and that's just correct. Will the council set a precedent to correct the previous error, make the sidewalk accessible to all, including my mother's disabled friend, or my disabled mother-in-law? Or will they ignore the issue, discriminate against persons with disabilities, and add contradictions to the messages at the end of every tap and nail? Will the town council set a precedent, let's see if the search of property owners, when the town's actions caused damage to their property, or will they sign with a special disgrudge and do a disservice to the property owner who pays taxes for such privilege? Most importantly, though, will the town council set a precedent to comply with the law, and the standards set out in case law, or will they flat or ignore them, overriding the town's potential cost of litigation? These two are supposed to be noted this evening. The unfortunate reality is that as infrastructure projects are done in this town, there are some large old trees that will need to come down in order to comply with the law. Let's focus our energy in making sure there are new trees planted in order to offset that eventual loss, rather than encourage our elected officials to violate the law. Let's take steps to make sure that any trees we are planting are planted in such a manner that they will comply with the steps by the ADA.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Lucy De Lauso. You on you, Lucy?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I wasn't able to attend the meeting in person today, as I was planning. Unfortunately, I sick and have been in and out of a hospital. As I understand, in the last meeting, there are currently three options on the table for the tree at 190 Somerset. One, remove the tree and fix the sidewalk. Two, install a bumper around the tree. Three, put a crosswalk on either side of the tree. In my opinion, option one is best, remove the tree, fix the sidewalk. Would remove the liability from the tree, fix the ADA violation, is best for the neighborhood. Option two, would significantly narrow the road, would cost the town over two hundred thousand dollars, according to the preliminary cost analysis of similar projects by Mr. Calla. Mr. Calla estimated removing the tree and fixing the sidewalk would cost about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars. This would also remove much-needed parking in the neighborhood if you were to create a bump out. This is a waste of town money just to save one tree. If the town wants to make a two-hundred-thousand-dollar investment into this project, it could be allocated better. The two-hundred-thousand-dollar estimate for Mr. Calla minus the cost of removing the tree could create, plant over six-hundred-and-fifty trees in the town at the current rate of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a tree that the town charges. Option three would fix the ADA violation, but would also remove parking from the neighborhood, which is much needed, and would not remove the town legal liability for damage that the tree caused. Two of these reports state that the tree is unstable root system, and is a possibility of uprooting. Our report states there's a moderate risk of that happening in the next year. Should anything happen, and this tree fall, cause damage, or cause injury at any point in the future? Because you are possession of those reports, and the town is can be held legally liable for all damages it caused, because the town was aware of this tree was a hazard, they're aware that it's already caused damage, and hasn't done anything to prevent it in the future. If this was your property, how would you feel? My property is being damaged. Do I have to wait till I crack my foundation for you to do something? It's going to cost me thousands of dollars to fix the damage this tree has caused it already. I have had several companies out to give me estimates to fix the damages caused by this tree. They all said the same thing, it's going to cost me thousands of dollars to fix, and there is no way for me to properly fix my property without cutting the roots of the tree and digging them out. And I can't do that, because this is a public tree. Since the tree has been labeled unstable, cutting the roots would also cause further damage to the tree, and cause it a bigger risk to fall, as the town may have just stated in the last meeting as well. The roots on the street side were already cut when the town had to replace the drainage, as my husband mentioned in his, in his statement. The tree has, has already damaged the town drainage line, my property, several cars, and caused two injuries that I'm aware of. You should have all received those emails with that information. I urge you to see a reason and look as to what the neighborhood wants. I know several of my neighbors have had emails, and several are actually on this hall right now. We want the tree removed, rather than losing parking in our neighborhood. Has the back parking that would be removed from the neighborhood been considered? Has a study been done to see if we could afford to absorb the loss of parking spots? The street is full almost every night. The town already took a parking spot away from the corner recently, and as people frequently illegally park there, because there's no other place to park. Several of our neighborhood homes have also been turned into multifamilies, and they don't have driveways.
Lucy, if you could just wrap up, please?
Excuse me?
If you could just wrap up, please?
I am. You allow Mr. Duck time, so I believe you should allow me some, too. They just converted some of the homes in my family into multi-neighborhood homes. One of the houses just went from a two-family to a three-family, another one went from a one-family to a two-family. We're in need of more parking in this neighborhood, not less. Lastly, I would like to ask you to please think of the people who are objecting to this tree removal. None of them live in our neighborhood. You don't live here. This tree doesn't affect you if I move, if I'm moving parking. This tree doesn't, other than the other options affect you. This affects me and people in my, live in my neighborhood every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
I have received some correspondence, and it has been from people on Somerset. And all of the people who have responded to me from Somerset have said that they want the tree removed. Not one correspondent, and that's five or six people, not one correspondent has said that they want the tree to stay. So we have another public comment period coming up. If anybody's on Somerset and they want that tree to stay, I would like to hear from them.
Denise, did we receive?
We did receive several, on Somerset, we also received several opposing the tree getting down.
Correct.
Didn't he say any from Somerset who oppose the tree coming down?
That opposed the tree?
Yeah.
Um, no.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Vice President Majira.
Thank you, Council President. The Rules and Ordinance Committee met last night with the Charter and Ordinance Review Commission's recommendations to the council on the agenda. In attendance were myself, Councillor Munson, Councillor DiMarco, Councillor Honan, and Councillor Belcher. Yes, that was, that was everyone there, okay?
Yeah.
We were also joined by members of the public, both in person and on Zoom. We spent quite a bit of time talking about strategy moving forward with this recommendation. There's quite a bit there, as we know. We talked about procedure and process, and how we're going to take it up, whether we want to go in the same exact order, or we want to go back to front, front to back. Really, it was a strategic and sort of a planning session before we really dug deep into the, to the meat of the recommendations. There were some questions on this current ORC report versus the prior ORC report. I think the committee is seeking a little bit more information on what the difference is, I guess, between the two. We have a legal opinion there, but I think just having that flushed out is something that I think would help the committee in trying to get this thing moving forward and up the line. We talked about everything from rubber stamping it and moving it on, to going through it piece by piece, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna go and do something in the middle. And we're gonna take a look at this and give it the due diligence that it deserves. But we, our plan is to go through each item, piece by piece, and discuss, and hopefully come back to the council by October seventeenth. We will be meeting frequently on this, so I encourage my fellow councillors to please try to attend the subcommittee meetings that we're having on this. I know it's another meeting, but I think it'll help expedite I know it's another meeting, but I think it'll help expedite things as we go through the process. If we can all kind of hear the discussions and hear the deliberations at the same time so that we're not rehashing the same arguments over and over and over again. And that's one thing that we talked about at the subcommittee meeting last night. Was let's not, if we're gonna talk about one of the recommendations, we're gonna talk about one of the issues, let's talk about it, move on. Talk about the next one, move on. We don't want to keep kind of recycling it. I know when we have a hefty report like that to go through, it's kind of hard to not go back and rediscover and rehash. But I think it would benefit us all if we're all kind of listening and hearing to the same discussions and deliberations at the same time, so. Our next meeting will be next week. We, I will talk to my fellow committee members to make sure we have a quorum. And we will post it on the town website within forty-eight hours of the meeting date, as always.
I think it would be good also to even see if CAT can be, the meeting's going to be in this room. If that's because it's very important and as much knowledge as can be shared is really good.
And eventually if it makes it to the public, right, the public's gonna need to be informed as well. So there's a, you know, there's a lot that goes into this and a lot that, a lot of homework that needs to be done.
Counselor.
Administratively, at the last meeting, I've asked if a editable Word document version could be sent to the council members so we could do markup. So when we show up, we could talk about it easier than scratching. Maybe it's been distributed. I missed it, but if not.
I know there was a document distributed. I don't know if it was.
I believe it was Word, but I'll check it out and get it.
Could you just check on that opinion?
So the updated report from the current ORC is also now on the front page of the town website. So for any folks interested and want to read it with their own fresh set of eyes, it's there, so.
And it might be a good idea maybe even to call CAT and see if you could do a couple, a couple of us can do like a question and answer period.
A road show, yeah, sure.
Yeah, like a little road show. Thank you. Moving on, that was the only committee report. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give a board's been, I missed the last meeting. I was on vacation, so thank you to Chief Townanty for covering for me. I appreciate that. We had a meeting on site with Councillor Iello and Councillor Belcher at the Fawn Bar property. The council had asked me to work on trying to move that property along and pre, you know, proceed with the sale. We met with the owners out there, talked about concerns, you know, we had with regard to potentially a wall and distance to the walkway. And it was a good back and forth. The only thing we asked them for before we moved forward with the sale and, you know, to a PNS was to get a sort of a conceptual design that we could bring back and show the council. And obviously, there's a desire to hold the hill and, you know, stabilize the hill, obviously, to the, you know, if you're standing in front of it, to the left of that property. The Army Corps of Engineers had already done a lot of riprap and, you know, stabilized the hill right underneath the water tank. But, you know, this property in the end, especially the house on the end, would have concerns about, you know, slope erosion and things like that. So, they have a plan for that. You know, ultimately, I think the plan is to create a couple of tiers and then probably ultimately gain a little bit more backyard for them too. So I wanted to see the conceptual so we could, you know, show it to the council and then sort of make a decision. So I wanted to thank Councillor Iello and Belcher for coming out there. It was a, it was a good meeting, so more to follow on that. I did follow up with the owners today and they are going to reach out to the engineer and then involve me in the process and see if we can get a conceptual. Not anything designed, but just sort of what, you know, they think it's gonna look like when it's done. There was some reference earlier about 550 Pleasant Street and the condo association. We're still working on that price. Yes, we had an appraisal done, but, you know, we have to take a look at multiple things. I'm working with Director Callar on that with regard to, you know, removing the existing stumps. Do we do that? Do we look to maybe put the trees right next door and then grind those stumps and not put them there? Trying to come up with the cost to make sure that actually that thirteen thousand will cover what it's gonna cost us to put those back, so. That's why that's not finalized yet. Once we get final numbers, we'll report back to the council as to what that estimate's gonna be. Union contracts, you see we decided we've got to move some money around for the fire department. The union contract has been settled. It's retro one year and then for the next two years, so that'll get us through FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. DPW is close. Probably a couple more meetings will wrap up with them. We started clerical meeting with the library for the first time next week. And we're also working with the police. We've had some good back and forth with regard to settling the old, the prior three-year contract that would have expired on June thirtieth. That still hasn't been settled. And then if we can get some settlement there, we'll start on the next contract if we can. You might have got an email from, with regard to Senator Lydia Edwards and a ferry ride that's happening this Friday at noon time. Being, I think, say the Boston or Quincy Center is being picked up around eleven-thirty. The ferry will get to Winthrop at twelve. She's trying to push really not only the money that they were able to allocate for the ferry, but also, you know, kind of tell the Winthrop Ferry so that there's a ride at noon time. Probably take an hour, hour and a half, so if anybody's available and you want to come down, we'll be doing a ferry ride around. I plan on being there as well. Thursday, I've got an invite to tour Deer Island. I haven't been out there yet, so we're getting a tour of the facility. I'm seeing that, so I'll be in there on Thursday morning. Some good news on the hiring front. We did hire a new treasurer collector, Brendan Carey from Nahat. Apparently the treasurer collector over there. He'll be starting on August twenty-ninth. We're also able to hire the assistant, Imani Combs. She comes from the private sector and with a banking background, but really was impressive during the interview. So we're bringing her on as the assistant treasurer collector, so they'll both start on August twenty-ninth. So some good news on that front. We did hire a consultant. Patrick Haring is doing our assessing for right now for the next six months. So we have that covered through the revale and getting, you know, the tax rate set and getting the new growth established and everything else. So we covered through the assessor's office while we still look to, you know, try to get a full-time assessor in that office. And then we'll be reposting the CFO position shortly to hopefully get that last one filled as well. I did a great meeting with the Bike Winthrop Group, Chris Iello, Julia Wallace, and Sarah Jane Furnas. Discussed the Greenway extension, you know, connect that in Winthrop, what that would take. You know, the bridge that would have to be built and, you know, potentially some impacts on the boatyard that's there. So we had a good meeting about that, so we'll look to forward to have more meetings on that in the future and work with them to hopefully make that a reality. And then we also are meeting with the Citizens Finance Committee on September fifteenth. They reached out to discuss the closing of the FY twenty-two budget and also to, Robbie and I have been working on to present the findings with regard to the indirect cost allocations that was promised. So more to follow on that, but that's gonna be coming up at that group and then we'll present that to the council shortly thereafter. And lastly, I saved it for last, so since we're gonna be talking about it next, 190 Somerset. Unfortunately, the discussion got cut off last time, so I wasn't able to elaborate on some stuff. You know, some of the things that were brought up tonight, yes, we do have an estimate for the tree removal. The gentleman spoke about it earlier. That cost to take down the tree is approximately seven thousand dollars. There is, while there are, you know, upgrades that should have been done when the work was done on the sidewalks, there are alternatives other than, you know, taking the tree down. College spoke about that earlier. The bump out is one. Obviously, that's an excessive cost, probably not realistic. But you could also install crosswalks. So I talked about that earlier when I talked about the fact that, you know, it was too far away to consider it reasonable accommodation. But certainly closer crosswalk, closer crosswalks would be a reasonable accommodation. We did run the numbers on that. To install an alternate path would be approximately ten thousand five hundred dollars. And we would lose one parking spot based on that. So that would be the, that would be the trade-off to do the crosswalks to accommodate that. So that takes care of the accessibility issue. There are ways to do it. Obviously, the one is to take the tree down and fix the sidewalks. But if you don't want to do that, you know, creating an alternate path and doing that, that will not only commlicate the architectural access board and any sort of ADA concerns. With regard to that, and just to wrap that up, one of the things that came out of this, and I took a look at it, you know, with the ADA, we're required to have a, you know, a policy with regard to sidewalks and how we're gonna make them accessible in the future. I don't believe we have that. I haven't found one yet. So I will look to get a grant so we can actually create that, taking the new tree policy into effect, taking into effect everything we want to do. So how are we gonna in the future, you know, we talked about brick line and bump outs and things like that, how does the town want to in the future address these issues? And that takes away the concern of, you know, undue cost to the town and potentially someone coming down and saying, oh, you know, my tree's doing the same thing. Well, if we have a policy in place and how we're doing that, then that's the town addressing that concern and moving forward. The other thing we don't have is a 504 coordinator or an ADA coordinator. I held that position in other towns. The ADA in towns of fifty more employees, you have to have that requirement. We don't have that now. In the interim, I'll take the responsibility. A lot of times it's the building commissioner, but I want to have a talk with the building commissioner before we make that permanent. So those are the two things we'd be required to put into place. You know, so now it comes down to the liability issue. You know, we've heard about, we've got reports. The credibility of one report was questioned, but we do have three reports. They're, you know, they're public documents. The tree removal cost is seven thousand dollars. You know, so we got, I know there's a lot of emotion in the room and people have sent me emails and certainly none of them, some of them haven't been nice, some have, but regardless, my job is to take the bullets and that's fine. But, you know, but I look at the global picture and for the whole town. And, you know, yes, we can accommodate the ADA concerns or architectural access board, whatever you want to call, those concerns can be addressed. So now, we've got three reports. If there were a branch to fall, if the tree would have fallen in its entirety on the house next door or on the street and somebody were to get hurt, you know, could the town be liable? Anybody can file a lawsuit. Certainly the town could be liable. Our attorney, Robin Stein, laid it out, you know, what, you know, individually, five thousand, you know, per incident with regard to one aspect and then the tort law, which would, you know, take it up to a hundred thousand dollars, potentially more, who knows? Now, we pay our attorneys about two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars an hour. At the cost of seven thousand dollars to take down the tree, that's approximately thirty hours of legal time. Certainly a lawsuit's gonna chew that up in very short order, especially if it goes to trial. And if it's the ten thousand five hundred to, you know, put crosswalks in, that's approximately forty hours of legal time. Now, so we gotta lay it out in cost-benefit, risk-reward, right? Is it worth, you know, keeping the tree with the potential if something were to happen, we need to get a lawsuit, it potentially could be found liable. Maybe we win, maybe we don't, but, you know, certainly the case could be made on one side that, you know, with the three reports we have, certainly one could make an argument that, you know, we were told that the tree had some issues and we did nothing, so. All of that, and I know this won't be a popular opinion, my, if I were making the decision, and certainly if the council asked me, my recommendation, you know, I would say, take the tree down. We'll fix the sidewalks and then we can plant three other trees in its stead nearby. Smaller trees obviously certainly won't take as much carbon dioxide out of the air and not the forty-eight pounds that was referenced in some emails I got, but eventually they will. And, you know, not to that degree. Certainly won't get as tall as an oak, but whether they're maples or, you know, the trees that were at Atlantis, those trees there. You know, they will eventually grow up and you certainly help with the tree canopy, so. With that, I'm certainly open to comments and questions from the council.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Questions? Vice President Rijro.
Thank you. Just a constituent issue that had come up. The detour of traffic heading out of town in the morning on Riviere Street. Going up through the Highlands. I've just received some constituent feedback that cars have been going quite quickly, trying to rush out of town in the morning. But they know with the detour not, they're trying to make up for lost time, having an out need to go around. Can we just maybe take a look at that with the police and?
We'll talk with Chief Tomasz if there's something we can do with it.
It's a, you know, pretty thickly settled residential neighborhood, just like the rest of the town is pretty much. But it's not a major roadway. It's a neighborhood street and so, you know, the neighbors in that part of town aren't necessarily used to cars coming by thirty, forty miles an hour. We can just keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I need to piggyback on that.
Counsel Flochard.
We had already, thank you, President. We had already raised this issue that the traffic is going through there too fast and the police had said that they would pay attention to it. I have not seen any police paying attention to it and I see a lot of cars that are just charging through there like they're annoyed with the whole neighborhood. Some of the neighbors have even put up handwritten signs saying, pay attention to this stop sign. So it's a problem.
I'll check with the chief in the morning, get back in.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yeah, no, I mean, Councillor Rijro and Councillor Flochard said it. I've gotten, I've gotten text messages from people living up in the Highlands saying they're ignoring the stop signs, they're, they're running wild. You know, I get it. It's a pain in the neck getting out of town. I get it. I totally get it. But, but we gotta, we gotta make, somebody's gonna get hurt. So we, we gotta make sure that it's safe and we have a detail up at that stop sign, making sure people are observing the laws of the road.
Counsel Munson.
Thank you, and I applaud you for your research on this 190 Somerset tree issue because it's obviously a major divisive issue. And so, and it's important for this town to have the right attitude going forward and it could set a precedent. And I, I guess I'm just curious about some of the liability issues. So isn't it true that we are liable for any public tree on any public property to hurt an individual to the same extent that we are now with this tree at 190 Somerset?
Sure. I would say, yeah, absolutely. I would say the difference, and anybody can file, like I said before, anybody can file a lawsuit. If a public tree would have fallen on somebody's house, insurance, if nobody gets hurt, the insurance company's gonna subrogate, they're gonna go after the town's policy. That's how that normally plays out. You know, the only difference here is we have three reports on this tree. You know, so those three reports would be used as evidence and, you know, whether or not people are, and I know I'm getting death stares and people give me dirty looks and that's fine. I get it. You know, but I'm looking at the global view and like I said, I think, and this one, yeah, I think there's enough evidence there that, you know, would certainly maybe increase, possibly increase that liability. And like I said, we may win, but not after thousands and thousands of dollars on that, so. And in legal fees and, you know, potential trials.
So that's where you're saying that whether the tree has a single branch fall down or not, you're saying there's a lawsuit that could happen just based on the reports alone?
I would, anybody can file, I would say, yeah, based on conversations we've had, certainly I would anticipate a lawsuit if we choose not to take the tree down. And that's certainly the goal of the council and we'll support that and back it up and do what we gotta do. But again, my job is to tell you all of the potential risks out there and then the council can make an informed decision.
I loved your, the solution that you proposed also that you had the two crosswalks, both on Terrace and Somerset, was it Prescott? And Somerset Terrace. So you're saying that we would only lose one spot?
Yep. Director Call and I spoke about that, yeah, we'd lose one spot if we put the two crosswalks in, which I think would check the box and be a reasonable accommodation.
But one thing that I did hear in that solution was the, the damage to the De Luiso family's property. Would, would we be liable for that, responsible for that?
If anybody, like, they could make a claim, I mean, I would say, I looked at the wall. I mean, I've certainly seen worse walls in this town than others. And I think that's probably, you know, you'd almost treat the roots like ledge and you could probably flatten that wall out and make it repair there. I think the bigger concern is, is limbs gonna fall, is the tree gonna fall? I think those, that kind of damage could probably be addressed.
Isn't the pruning and inspection, the ongoing pruning and inspection, or the initial immediate pruning and then the ongoing inspection, wouldn't that mitigate that?
You would like, you, hopefully, but I mean, you don't know what the, are the roots gonna branch out, who knows where they're gonna go. But, I mean, pruning was recommended anyway. I think the tree warden even talked about that. Even if the council decides to keep the tree, we're gonna do pruning on the tree, so to take care of that, that'll happen.
Lastly, I love the fact that we are thinking big picture here and that you are specifically thinking big picture. So it's not just 190 Somerset that we're discussing today. Really, that's why there's so much passion in the room and in all the last four hundred-plus days in this topic. It's because I think that many of the residents are diehard believers in the value of trees and the longevity of this town ability to fight climate change, et cetera, et cetera, and just the beauty and the shade that the canopy provides. So I think that's really where it's at. And so what, this policy that you were talking about, this would be something in, along the lines of fulfilling an ADA policy or more of a tree policy?
Oh, I mean, sidewalk and how we're gonna deal with not only making the sidewalks accessible, but how are we gonna deal with the trees? So to give guidance to not only the planning board, but the DPW director. So as we move forward and we're bidding out these projects, I mean, how, I mean, you can't flash forward, but how easy and less expensive would it have been when we were doing the sidewalk work on 190 Somerset if we decided to do a bump out at that point? It certainly would have been a lot cheaper than two-hundred thousand dollars if we just had a bump out at that point. Had we had a policy in place, we could have referenced that policy and possibly done that. You know, so moving forward as we deal with these trees, as they come up, having that policy in place to do things like that.
Right. But that work that we did in 2011 has no bearing on the liability or to us?
If we were to crosswalk it, no, I don't think so, because with that, we came up with a reasonable accommodation. It needs to be addressed, but, because we did work on the sidewalk, so we triggered it. We didn't do anything then, but if we were to crosswalks and that would give an alternate path and would allow, you know. It's not great. I mean, if you're in a wheelchair or a handicap, certainly you wouldn't want to have to cross the street, but it's, I believe it would be reasonable. Closer, not, you know, a quarter mile down the street.
So without the pending lawsuit, it does seem like the two crosswalks and the fixing of the side would resolve the problem, more or less, along with some pruning and ongoing inspection. The thing that you ultimately said was, because there's going to be legal fees most likely, it actually does seem like the most long-term decision. Your thought was it to take the tree down because of the expected costs?
Correct. And I think we could plant three trees there, which isn't optimal because we want the older, more established tree for sure. But if you plant three trees, it's a compromise, right? It's not a best-case scenario, but that would be, you know, my recommendation.
Is that something that we could kind of implement as an ongoing policy for every tree down? We could take?
As we do the policy, that's something we certainly could talk about. I wouldn't want to commit to it now, but I mean, as we do the policy, that's certainly something we could put in there. Now, we're considering.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councillor Iello.
Let's talk about some non-tree stuff first and then we'll talk about tree stuff.
We really have to talk about the tree stuff later anyway.
I could do it later. All right. First of all, thank you for the presentation on the asset management. All right, first of all, thank you for the presentation on the asset management plan, that's a great step in the right direction. Uh, but can I assume or get your thoughts on migrating sort of similar programs to make sure we have. Uh, water and sewer.
Yep.
Roads, sidewalks, public parks, tree inventory, all that stuff on similar databases, what?
Director Call has reached out to Woodward and Curran to get an estimate, uh, on the water to give us a, you know, GIS mapping, age of system. Pressure test on that whole hydraulic study, uh, things that you asked for, so we can put a plan together as capital replacement. Um, we think we got something late this afternoon, I haven't digested it, so I didn't wanna just offer it up.
I've said this before, I'll say it again, uh, it's always great, we use Woodward and Curran all the time, but I went through the Yellow Pages the other day and there's. More than one engineering company in this region.
Understandable, yep, and, and, and we can actually try to get some other prices.
Competition, cuz even if we get ten percent savings, we're spending millions of dollars, we can give that money to the elderly, other public schools.
Won't be millions of dollars to do what you're asking for.
No, but over time, over time, with fees, we've given these guys millions of dollars, right?
Right, and then there's also the historical information they have and some of the back.
A little competition, is it?
Well, let's see if the other prices are high, right?
Is there no competition, there's nothing wrong with that, okay, that's good.
That's, that's procurement one.
Um, next, uh, I had, uh, previously asked if we could have a database of all the issues that get raised by the councils. That get brought to your attention and wondering where you are and creating that database so we know when we're gonna get responded to.
I'm working on a template, I just, I was on vacation last, the week before, and I haven't got the chance to get to it yet, uh, but it will be done shortly.
Cuz I, I have some updated pictures, from pictures I first took in January that I've taken since and since, based upon, um. Uh, there's a gentleman by the name Mister Demento, I've never met him. The private use of the parking lot back here is, is getting worse and worse and worse, I think there's a couple of companies that think that that's their. Their parking lot these days. There's no enforcement, we've talked about it, we talked about the police chief. If something's gonna happen, we were promised a map to determine who owns what, we were promised to understand what the code was. That's been the answer so far, no, no offense to you, but as a council, I shouldn't care who's sitting there, I, we should get answers for the public. We're not getting them, and it's beginning to get a bit upsetting, okay, so we just need to, we need to move in that direction. Um, with respect to the Mass, uh, Office of Disabilities, uh, the Architectural Barrier Board, I'm, I'm delighted of the update you gave us. In terms of the accommodation could we happen. I, I, I believe they refer to the report that you think this town needs to make, and I agree that we do need to make it, is a transition plan.
Correct.
Uh, is the formal name of report we need to have on file.
Yep.
The woman, I don't know if you caught it, but the woman Stacy Hart mentioned that there was currently a funding round at the Mass Office of Disabilities for grant applications. I'm not sure if that's on your radar.
Yep, and also Community Compact, I'm looking at both of those.
Yeah, so they're like mid-September, late September due dates on, on that stuff, so. Um, let me, can I tackle the tree? Just very, very narrow, very narrow thing on the tree. Um, I, I, I think it's important that to, despite your recommendation. That everything you said about the potential liability that that tree provides, whether to the neighbors. Uh, to, uh, uh, to passersby, et cetera. Um, is the same liability that exists with every tree that we plant in the public right away, it's exactly the same, no difference. The ability for someone to say, I'm gonna sue you, like, I can, they dug up my bushes when they did Bartlett Road and some of them haven't recovered. Technically, I can sue, right, so we can get sued all the time, if we ran around like chickens. Because people are saying I'm suing, gonna sue you, we would have no government, we'd be in a panic, right, we might as well close up shop, so. And I would say this, we have a tree warden who has recommended against taking down the tree, we've got the two legitimate reports that say.
I talked to the tree warden today, he did, told me he did not make a recommend, the tree advisory committee did, right, he stopped.
Okay.
Yeah, short of doing it cuz of the complaints, and then he, it came to the council.
Okay, we've got a tree committee that did it, we've got two reports from Alvarez that say there's no immediate threat of that thing falling, I would argue. That given the documentation that we've gone through and given the commitments and care that we've taken with respect to that tree. We'd probably have less liability for that tree than someone raising a complaint against us about another tree. I don't want applause, please, this is quite serious, cuz if you go around and look at trees, we've got trees with dead branches sticking this way, and dead branches sticking this, and doing all this other stuff. That's a giant liability with no studies, no effort by the town, at least we have been trying to understand the situation here. That is a better defense for us in court than you, than your average tree out there, so we're actually in a much better place. With respect to defending the interests of the town with this tree than other trees, so I think, I, I disagree with your logic and I. Uh, I, I just wanted to express.
Don't necessarily read that the report says what you said, but that's fine, that's, anybody can read it and interpret it in a bunch of different ways, right?
They're pretty clear. And the state law says if you've got a healthy tree, you can't take it down, that's what it says.
All right, um, just a quick thing, maybe through the town manager to the DPW director, school, it's crazy that we're at that time of year already, but schools will be, uh. Kicking off in a couple of weeks, I think August thirty-first, the kids go back, Wednesday, Thursday. Um, thank you so much for doing all the crosswalks around the school. Any update, uh, we should be fined for accessibility to Revere Street, uh, to Fort Banks for the season, for the year?
There's still gonna be work on Revere Street, uh, you've got gas on Revere Street, you've got electric on Revere Street. Um, they understand schools starting, um, there may be, um. Couple options, they may have to go to some night work. Um, and they may, may need to, uh, do short windows during the, during the day, you know, during school entering and exiting. You have to stop work and, and then maybe resume. That's kind of the, the situation we're in right now, you've got a couple major projects happening on, on the main corridor in town. A tip project, all this other stuff has to happen for that tip project to happen. Uh, we're, uh, programmed in for, uh, spring two thousand twenty-four start. So, you know, we finally got funded for some, uh, some water main improvements and, and, and the gas has finally got us on their capital plan. And they're in there. Electrics on the other leg, so that roadway is, is gonna be busy unless we want to, uh. You know, push off our commitment to the tip project and let those projects end, and, I mean, that's, that's an administration decision. That's, those are timelines to deal with.
And, um, I know former Counselor Farino will be very excited to see the EB Newton clock towers starting. You know, making some visible strides, there's been some pieces of the clock removed, so people haven't seen the off-site work, but. There's some visible work being done now, so we hope that that will be completed, uh, relatively soon, so that's a, a good thing. And again, I thank former Counselor Farino for pounding and pounding us to make sure we get that done, uh, Vice President Ruggiero.
Just one quick question, uh, for the man, Steve, through, however this works, but, um, the CBD project, are we, are we done? Are we complete with that?
The striping, uh, they're gonna resume on Thursday with the striping, and they.
I was hoping to just say yes.
Very, very close, we walked through there, the last piece of it down there is, is striping.
Okay, yeah, you know, I.
The, the drain work and the rain, but that's again, that was a, uh, added-on, uh, piece of the project.
Right, okay.
And not part of the original contract, so I'm hoping by the end of the day, Thursday, I can look at you and say.
All right, so I'll, I'll ask again at our next meeting, and hopefully we get the resounding yes, and we can all have something to celebrate, that's been, uh. Long time coming and, you know.
Yeah.
Thankfully, it's almost.
Well, pretty soon it will coincide with all the moving trucks coming there for the people moving into the apartments at the beginning of September, so. Counsel DeMarco.
Uh, Steve, um, is there a possibility, you know, with the ongoing work on Revere Street? Um, is it possible to dedicate somebody in a crossing guard capacity? For people going down Bayou Street to go to Fort Bank School? Um, because. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 what I was saying is, with all the work in construction going on on Revere Street. Is it possible to dedicate somebody to serve as somewhat of a crossing guard? For kids commuting to school coming in September down Bayou Street? Um, from Revere?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't handle the crossing guys as Lisa, I can tell you that Bayou is a private way.
Right.
I know everybody keeps talking about it being a safe route to school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, 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 it's a private way, so I think that there's no sidewalks on there, certainly not ADN compliant. Uh, I don't know that I would, uh, put a crossing guard there and, and, and kinda.
I know it's a private way, I'm just telling you, I'm ju- I'm just telling you, as a parent who lived on Revere Street, I took my kid to school. There for three years, I walked down Bayou Street, it was just an easy access point. Um, and it's just.
I mean, it was, it's also run it and, and dangerous in the winter, I'm sure you didn't do it, you know, so there's this challenge. Now you're, now you're saying, come on, this is the safe way to go.
Yeah, well, I, I'm, I'm just saying it's a quicker way to go, and it's.
Yeah, I don't think I would cross there without a crosswalk.
No, and, and, and that's, and that's something we've talked about, is putting a crosswalk on, on that road.
Right, and that will come, and, and that will come, you know, at, at the, at the final recreation of that road. We're not there yet, and it's, it's still a major construction zone. I don't know that that's the best place to make crossing, I would still, not in convenience, I would go up to the satellite where there is a crosswalk.
Okay.
And go that way, that would be what I would recommend at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Flockhart.
Uh, this is a little late, but you didn't mention the three month street, uh, construction, what's the status of that at this point?
Uh, they secured up the building, it's a status quo, nothing's had, no activity's happening now, I believe they had their first meeting with the planning board last night. Um, so that was discussed, um, I think at some point they'll have to go to the ZBA as well, reverences and relief. Um, if, you know, they wanna leave in the current configuration, due to, you know, side setbacks and things like that, but, uh, they're starting the process that they have to start. With the planning board now, and then after that, if they need to, they'll go to one ZBA, I believe they will, but we'll see what happens.
All right, thank you very much. School Department report, there was a very abbreviated meeting, uh, at the school committee last Monday. We have, we have to start having meetings like the school committee meetings. But there was a very abbreviated meeting, but, um, I do just wanna again reiterate that. Uh, school will be back in session before our next meeting, so we have a chance to say that everybody have a great school year. Uh, be careful, be safe, all the drivers out there, be, uh, vigilant about kids walking to and from school. Um, again, that's, we talked about a lot of stuff, to me, that's, that's our most precious asset, and we wanna be careful of that and make sure that. They all have as good a school year as they could possibly have, so. Um, that is it for the school department report, now we will go to old business. Uh, one ninety Somerset Ave. So, I guess, uh, the best way to, to do this is to put, if, if there was a motion on the table and seconded. Then we could discuss the motion back and forth, and we could vote on the motion. So, is there a motion to remove the tree, keep the tree? Whatever anybody wants to make, but we need a motion on the table to begin discussions.
Motion to remove the tree.
It's a motion by Counselor DeMarco to remove the tree at one ninety Somerset, is there a second for discussion only? Second by Counselor Belcher for discussion. Now, we could open the floor, Counsel, uh, Flockhart.
Uh, well, with regard to that tree, we did consult KP Law, our legal firm. And they talked about the liability, but I gather that they are talking about the liability with respect. To maintaining a decayed and dangerous tree, with this tree, it's definitely not. That this, we've had multiple reports that this is a very healthy, stable tree. Uh, it certainly does impact this property owner. But with regard to falling down, that doesn't seem to be an issue. Also, I have a hard time talking about taking this tree down. When later on in this meeting, we are going to discuss asking Massport to give us money to build trees. To fight the pollution that we're getting from the airport. Uh, so, we've got a perfectly good tree that's fighting the pollution right now, but we're talking about taking that down. When we're then going to go ask for money to put up more trees to fight the pollution. So, I'm very sorry about what's happening with this, uh, property owner, and he definitely does have problems with this tree. There's no question about that, but I don't think that they're great enough that we have to sacrifice the tree. Especially since we have so many other trees that are in similar situations or worse.
That's it? No, I know for you, that's it.
The other discussion already.
And we do have Counselor Fusillo on Zoom, correct, just, everybody else. Um, Vice President Ruggiero.
Sure, so, um, this has been a long time coming, as, I think that's an understatement, I think we all know that. Um, I think this is unprecedented for the town council to be making a decision. On a tree removal or a tree maint- maintenance, or whatever we wanna call it, not removing a tree. Um, to my understanding, the reason why this is with the council is because. Under Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, Section four. The removal of a public shade tree in some instances needs the approval of this, of a select, it reads selectman or mayor. We are neither of those, when I read selectman or mayor, I think executive branch, administrative. Department, I do not read legislative body. Um, with that said, I, I understand that this could be interpreted such that it is the town council, right? So, sure, that, that may be interpreted that way. Um, but in Section four of Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, the request comes to the selectman or mayor. When there is a proposal by the tree warden to cut down a tree. So, the tree warden shall not cut down a tree or move a grant for a permit for cutting down a shade tree. If at before hearing, um, objections made in writing, unless such cutting down or permit to cut down. Is approved by the selectman or the mayor, right now, there's not an approval to cut down the tree by the tree warden. There's not an approval to, um, to, to approve a permit to cut down this tree. So, at this point, I, I'm not sure that, you know, once, once the tree's cut down, you can't put it back. And the, the tree committee has, um, opined on this, no pun intended. In an email to us by its chair on June twenty-seventh. Um, so, the tree committee voted to, um, recommend to the council that the tree be not removed. We do not have an opinion from the tree warden, Mass General Law leaves the tree warden with the ultimate authority on this, so. Um, at this point, I'm not sure I have enough information, um, to recommend removing the tree, cuz like I said, you can't put it back once we voted, once we. Take it down, so that, that's where I'm at right now. Um, there's not a proposal to take it down, so I'm not even sure what we're voting on, but. If we are gonna trigger Section, Section four of Chapter eighty-seven, if we're not, if we're not going by Chapter eighty-seven, Section four. Um, then, then, okay, I guess we can continue to discuss this and eventually vote, but, um. You know, and I'm also not a lawyer, I'm doing my best impression, so, um, that's how I read this.
Pretty good.
We, we did talk to KP about Chapter eighty-seven, Section four, and. Um, and again, I think, I talked to town manager and, and also you, and. The end of that, and I don't have it right in front of me, but the, the last sentence is, if there is communication, so my understanding is there was communication from people. That had objections, not with the opinion, because they, my understanding is they actually approved the opinion, but had objections. Which the tree warden then felt it was going, if there is an objection, per Article eighty-seven, Chapter four. Regardless of the decision, it is going to go to the, in this case, the town council. Um, and I think that was the impression there. Would I have liked an opinion from the tree warden? Yes. Um, no doubt about that, um, but we don't have one. Um, so, and we did talk to the tree warden today also. Um, to see his reasoning, and that was my understanding of the phone call, that was his reasoning, if I'm wrong. Uh, but just to answer, because it is, it's extremely ambiguous and, and, you know.
And, and, I mean, I don't think, you know, in my years following the town council, I don't think. A trigger of Mass General Law, Chapter eighty, Section, eighty-seven, Section four has ever come up before, so if this is what is triggering our decision, it would have been nice to have some guidance. Surrounding the interpretation of this section in particular as we go forward. Um, if we don't have that precedent in town, does it exist throughout? If we don't have that precedent in town, does it exist throughout the state? This is a state law, right? A lot, Chapter 87 is chock full of, um, tree-related rules and regulations. So, um, you know, I, I think my, my feeling with this is more sort of procedural. And I know that it's taken 400 days to get to us, and I would have talked about it last week, but our discussion got cut short. So this is the first opportunity for us to really, um, have at it, but yeah. Just want to-
Just going to go down the row. Consul Ayello?
Well, I don't think we have any choice but to keep the tree in place. And I say that because, uh, there were basically two arguments put before us in the public discussion and what has been transpired at the committee, et cetera. One was ADA, and I think we have now settled that there are alternative pathways. We can settle ADA and not have a liability with respect to ADA. And I think that was good work. And the second is, um, the tree itself, does it create a hazard? And I think, uh, we have not met the burden of proof. That is required by Massachusetts law that says it is diseased and in imminent danger of, um, harming someone or harming property. And without that, I don't think we have any choice but to leave the tree in place. I think if we were to go the opposite direction, um, I think we're going to face liabilities on a whole set of other trees around the town, which would really be a tragedy of, of a proportion I don't think this town has ever seen before. And we need to, we need to avoid that at, at all possible costs. With respect to the homeowner, if the homeowner, as in any case, uh, our private citizen feels that they have been harmed by something and can evidence that harm, they can petition the town to reimburse them for costs, right? And, um, and that should get fairly evaluated. So, um, my view is leave the tree in place. Let's do the ADA accommodation. Let's also do the full townwide ADA transition planning starting. I think that's an important, uh, element so that as we have moved about the town with this issue over time, we have a better pathway. Um, but I, I just don't think we have a, a choice in the matter.
Consul DiMarco.
So, um, I, I, um, I agree with Consul Ayello that we don't have a choice on the matter, but my opinion is completely different. I think the tree needs to come down. And I know there's a lot of people who don't like that answer. Um, I know. I know Suzanne. Um, but, but I think, I think that's what needs to happen. Now, that being said, um, I do agree with Steve Rogero. Um, I'm not going to, um, knock, uh, uh, this is not, uh, uh, an insult to Paul O'Donnell, okay? But how many arborists are on the town council? Anybody an arborist here? No. This, this decision should have been made by the tree warden, in my opinion. I, and, and Jack, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but i- if, if it was your call, you would have told me to go pound sand. And here's my decision, the tree's coming down or the tree's staying up, and I-
Never took a tree down.
You never took a tree down?
No conversations.
With, with, uh-
No conversations. I'm sorry, Jack.
For that type of tree.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, President. Uh, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I don't think this should be a decision that we have to make. I, I feel like this was passed to us and it shouldn't be our decision because we're not the experts here, um, in my opinion. But, you know, because it's before us, you know, I'm, I'm telling you that I, you know, I think from a financial perspective, we have a lot more to lose if that tree stays up than we do if we take it down.
Consul Belcher.
Thank you. Um, this is a complicated issue. Uh, there's a lot of things that are intertwined. There's the ADA compliance issue. There's a financial situation. There's the property damage. And I think the financial risk of leaving the tree up at this point is significant enough to consider removing it. And I don't want to take trees down. I don't want to lose nice trees, but I also don't know or don't think that this would set a precedent necessarily. We can look into the transition plan so that we examine other options. The bump outs, the bump ins, the crosswalks. Not every solution is going to work for every site. So I think, in my opinion, at this site, the removal is, puts us at the least amount of financial risk. And that's my concern as a counselor.
Consul Munson?
I mean, I think through, um, I think that I have a pro-tree attitude as do most people, including I think the owners that have brought this to our attention. And, um, I think, I think we found a solution. And it actually is to keep the tree and do the crosswalks. And I think that works. I think that we can't operate with the fear of being sued all the time. If I knew that, and even if you think about it, if you think about the math, the, the cost to remove the, the tree and to repair the sidewalk is somewhere in the vicinity of 25, 20, 30,000. Whereas if you co- take the cost of the crosswalks, we're at around, just around 10,5 or let's say 11 for, for easy math. So right there, we're up 20, 25,000. So that right there, if we do get sued, we are actually already up 20 on the net. So we have some room to work with. And I think that Joe Ayello brings a great point up. We have a ton of great contextual evidence with those reports. This is a really solid tree. It's a big, beautiful tree that's going to be there for a long time. And I do have empathy for the, the family that's right beneath them. And I would hate if I was pushed up against the corner or up against the wall, so to speak, that there would be no one to help me out as a, as a resident on my street with a, a public property damage. But I think in this situation, the damage is aesthetic. And if it ever gets to a point where there actually is damage to the foundation that, you know, or even close, then that's when you take it down, when there's real consequential damage, not when it's just aesthetic. So I would say that right now, I'm in favor. We found a solution. Let's go do it. And, uh, and let's stay with the right mentality of, um, you know, be in a healthy town.
Consul Honan?
Um, as Consul Ayello noted, um, I don't believe we've met the burden of proof. As Consul Rogero noted, once it's down, we can't put it back up. We don't have a solid opinion regarding this tree specifically from legal. It was more of a broad opinion offered by, um, KMP Law that we received. Um, we have expert opinion from arborists. Um, I'm going to discount the one, the one-page report from Pathfinder versus the 17-page reports from the other arborists. All three reports noted that the tree was healthy. Um, the new tree ordinance notes that we will not take down healthy trees. I too, like Consul Munson, uh, like the idea, like the option of leaving the tree and adding the crosswalks on either side, omitting only one parking space on that street. Um, I too live right adjacent to that street. I live on Pleasant Street and I walk my dogs on Somerset every day. Um, there's plenty of parking on that street at all times of the day. Plenty of parking. I've seen it. Um, uh, I think we need to look at this from a 20,000-foot view. Look at the big picture, see the forest through the trees. Sorry if I didn't grow. And consider what the arborist Tom Pedarian mentioned regarding climate change and pollution. Let's look at the big picture here, you know? It's, it's, we need to maintain a canopy. Our world is changing and, you know, we can't just be taking down, um, our, our canopy in town and getting rid, get rid of our, 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 our carbon gatherers, um, opening ourselves up for, you know, heat islands as, uh, Ms. Pienz mentioned. We just need to think, you know, not just, uh, streetwise, we need to think townwide and, and all of the impact that taking down tree canopy is going to have. Um, and, and planting saplings, that's not going to have effect, you know, climate change is happening now. We've seen that with the, with the horrible heat we, we just went to, went through. And I mentioned walking my dogs and I walk my dogs a couple of times a day. And it's hard for me to find shade, uh, cool enough sidewalks. I have to walk them early in the morning or very late, uh, in the afternoon or at night because the pavement is too hot because I can't find shady areas. And it's a shame. Uh, and, and as well, for those of you who don't care about the environment, who don't care about trees, and I know there, there's some of you out there, um, let's talk property value, you know? Streets that are bare of trees don't hold property value like tree-lined streets. So if your property value matters to you, if money matters to you, if that's where you're coming from, let's talk about property values. Trees maintain property value and add property value. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Consul Fusillo have any comments?
Comment, just um.
All right. Uh, and, and I will just say, um, you know, I think everyone had really good comments. It's always good to have options, which, do have a couple of options. Um, I, I do think the bump out is economically unfeasible and not acceptable to me anyway. The crosswalks, my concern with the crosswalks would only be, or would be, the, that we would be checking the box for the accessibility issue and for the tree. But we would also be, you know, placing inequity on people with disabilities zigzagging the street, which again, uh, you know, I talked about precious assets being our children. I, and I would put more stock in anybody, but especially people with disabilities than I would the tree. So, um, that's my concern with the crosswalks. It's definitely a, um, short-term economically much more advantageous potential solution than, than a bump out would be. Um, I still think, and again, our job is to watch out for the economics of the town too. And I still think in the end, it will end up being a, uh, a huge loss financially. And, and not saying that we would, we will lose a potential lawsuit, but I think we'll be facing them. But that's it. I mean, it was good conversation. It was right to the point. Everybody had, did their homework. And I guess that's what you could do when it takes 400 days to come to us, but, uh, everybody was well-versed and I appreciate that. And, um, if there is nothing else, I would ask to move the question. Consul Ayello has asked to move the question. There's a second by Consul Flakat to move the question. Um, I will ask for a roll call, vote on this. And just to let everybody aware, a yes vote would, um, remove the tree. This has nothing to do with the crosswalks. That's going to be a, a separate issue after. Uh, and no vote would, um, keep the tree in its current condition. And then there would have to be some sort of circumstances that came after that would try to mitigate the issue that I think everybody understands that we have if the tree stays. So a yes vote would remove the tree and no vote would keep the tree. And I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Consul Honan?
No.
Consul Fusillo?
Yes.
Consul Munson?
No.
Consul Belcher?
Yes.
Consul DiMarco?
Yes.
Consul Ayello?
No.
Consul Flakat?
No.
Consul Rogero, Vice President Rogero?
No.
President Luteri?
Yes. So the tree will stay. And my understanding is a 5-4 vote, correct? We will then ask, uh, can we make a motion for the crosswalk solution? Yes. But I think it, you know, I, I think the solu- the motion would read something like we have to look at. I know, I believe it's been scoped out by the DPW director. I don't know to what extent. And I would expect it to come back with a loss as stated of only one spot, if that's the solution. And I'm sure it's going to maintain all the restrictions within a crosswalk and then there'd have to be handicap ramps.
Cramp cuts with the Ronalds groups there.
If we're going to do this, that the accessibility is as good as it possibly can be for anybody that needs it. So yes, I would entertain a motion to go forward with, um, with the design and, and work of a crosswalk. Of, it, there would be two crosswalks, one on either side of the tree. And there's, there's a motion made by Consul Munson, correct?
Can I ask you a question about the motion? To what degree can I implement, uh, can I add things such as, um, the pruning of the tree as soon as possible with ongoing inspection?
That's totally separate. And that's going to be done regardless of what happens. That has to be done. I mean, we have a liability. We, we have, we've been told we need to do this. So that's not going to come from us. That's not part of the motion though.
So the motion would be to implement the crosswalks? I'd like to make a motion to implement the crosswalks, uh, around 197 or 7 tree.
There's a second by Consul DiMarco. Discussion on the crosswalks. Vice President Rogero.
Obviously, I am in favor of keeping this neighborhood in compliance with state, federal, whatever laws. I'm not sure if, I think another thing here is this tree in this neighborhood has grown to represent a larger political theme in town. And I'm not sure if this would be better suited to handle all of these potential, um, violations or potential questions in one fell swoop, um, as opposed to cherry picking one at a time. I think the town manager talked about a policy, um, that would cover the entire town. I think that's a, a step in the right direction. Um, that's probably a, a good permanent solution moving forward. I would be in favor of this, obviously bringing it up to speed, but I, I guess just a question to the manager, if that's appropriate right now.
Absolutely.
Would you, would you, in terms of workflow, would you prefer to see us pass a policy first? Or would you prefer to see us come forward with a recommendation here, um, to fix this problem? Because, uh, I'm not sure, you know. Sorry to put you on the spot, but-
No, it's fine. I mean, right now, right now, we don't have a complaint, right? So, I mean, we know it potentially could be one. We don't have one. So I think we start on the policy. If the complaint, complaint comes down the line, then I'll come back with some plans and, you know, look to address it at that point. I think starting on the policy is a good first step, my, you know, opinion.
No, and, and when it comes back to me, I, I agree with that. And I think that, you know, the council just made a decision that, well, to the best of my knowledge, not one neighbor wants. But that's the purview of the council and it was with community input. But to now just throw two crosswalks in without any input, again, from the neighbors and the effects of them, I think is bad on us to do that. So, um, you know, again, I appreciate the motion and it can be voted on. But, you know, we need to do something. I think, I thought my understanding was everybody understood that the option was to leave the tree, but you had a couple of options of what to do. So there's got to be something to do to mitigate the accessibility issues. I don't know if that's just gangbusters, go forward and start doing crosswalks tomorrow. Not that that's going to happen. But, um, I think you need input from the neighbors, myself. But there's a motion on the table. It's been seconded. There's been discussion, but further discussion on the motion on the crosswalks.
Having not made the motion-
No, I know, but I'm just asking for-
Can I, can I suggest that-
Well, you could make an amendment to the motion.
John's perspective as he's thinking about this.
You can make an amendment to the motion if that's what you're looking at or-
Well, I don't know what amendment to make. No, I'd like to have John's reaction in terms of whether he wants to continue with this, amend it or whatever. I just want to be respectful too. I know what you're trying to achieve.
I would love to have amended it when I made it because I don't think that this should just, first of all, I don't think that we can choose to not take the tree down without a solution. It makes this 400-day wait pointless. So I feel like we have to not only, um, say, make a decision on the tree, but we have to go ahead and enact a solution, which, uh, if we could make it more thorough, that would be wonderful with an amendment. And part of that would be, you know, some things along the lines. And with the, uh, with the consent or with the, uh, review of, uh, the neighbors, we would like to, uh, pursue, uh, crosswalks as soon as possible.
So why don't I offer that as-
Would you, would you, would you like to send this to public safety? There'd be a public comment. Neighbors could come. You could get information. Um-
Yes.
What do you have a difference?
I would just say to make the motion to give it to me to go out and research it and come back with a solution.
I just don't want anything done without input.
The board is worried of the tree as far as implementing the crosswalks. It's sort of day-to-day operation stuff. And we can take care and make sure we take a look at that. Certainly it's been the 504 coordinated before. I know what we need to do for crosswalks, curb cut requirements, all that. So as does Steve. So we'll make sure we look at it. But I think having a, even a listening session or go onto the neighborhood and let people know we're going to be there a certain time. Sometimes you get some great ideas from the neighbors. you get some great ideas from the neighbors, things we may not have thought of that could do the same thing and maybe be the, who knows? So I, I think going out there and engaging with the neighbors is definitely necessary. And that'll give us some time to do that.
So does Counsel Munson want to withdraw his motion? And then we will forward this to the town manager for the time being, and then come back with suggestions. And again, nothing's going to happen without input from the, from the neighbors. What do you want?
None.
So that is what, is the, so to, to get things done faster, I could withdraw the motion so that he could just put it on his plate and take care of it?
Yeah. Well, either way, it's going to go to the town manager, whatever we do. But this way, it gives him the ability to have more clarity and more input from the, without us telling him, this is what we're doing, how we're doing it. We just want you to do it. He's going to look into the possible solutions I could make it.
Sure.
Then I withdraw. And Counsel DeMarco withdraw a second? All right. So we, as a council, are directing you to come back to us.
In order with the public works, I think the charter references that. So I want to take a look at that as well.
Thank you so much. New business. Town Council waived rules to change September 6, 2022 meeting due to the state primary elections. There are elections on September 6. We have never had a meeting during Election Day. Our council clerk is also the town clerk, and she's relatively busy that day as well. So there's two options here. Well, there's a few options here. Meeting schedule in September, September 6 and September 20. I did talk to the Assistant CFO right now to see if there's any pressing financial matters. What I would like to do is have a motion to waive Rule 2A of the Town Council procedures to reschedule the meeting of September 6 as a special meeting on September 7. This, now, we would only take up issues that need, that are pressing. And then we would have our regularly scheduled meeting on the 20th. It is.
Yeah, okay.
But I want discussion on that before anybody made a motion to think. So basically, we can't meet on the 6th. Our options would be to have a special meeting on the 7th, just on business that is of pressing matters, to have another, to forget the 7th, have a meeting on the 13th instead of the 6th, and keep the meeting on the 20th, or to just have one meeting on the 20th with no option. I think we should give ourselves the opportunity in case there is business that needs to be done to have a special meeting. This way, it's not a full calendar, and it gives us the ability to.
I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion, provided nobody on the council has any objections.
So there's, there's a motion, Counsel DeMarco made a motion to move the Town Council rate, waive Rule 2 of the Town Council Rules and Procedures to Reschedule the September 6, 2022 Town Council Meeting to a Special Meeting on September 7, 2022, with agenda to follow due to the state primary election. That motion was made by Counsel DeMarco, it was seconded by Counsel Flakat. Any discussion on the motion? This would not change the regularly scheduled meeting on September 20. Seeing.
I think it makes a ton of sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President.
Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel Fusillo?
I think he said yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Belcher?
Sorry, no, hey, sorry, yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Ayello?
Yes.
Counsel Flakat?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Motion's passed. There's a mo, there's a motion that the Town Council vote to transfer $195,000 from the salary reserve account to the fire department budget to cover the costs associated with the fiscal '22 through fiscal '24 collective bargaining agreement or take any other action relative there, too. I will motion that and move that to finance. And that is a, as a result of contract settlement for fiscal '22, '23, '24. Counsel Appointments. Town Council accept the reappointment of Karen Nguyen made by Town Council President Luteri to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2023 or take any other action relative there, too. I think Vice President Ruggiero has the hammer now, so.
And do I hear a motion on any appointments? I think we just heard one.
Yes, we did hear one motion to reappoint Karen Nguyen to the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2023.
Is there a second on this motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counsel DeMarco. Any discussion? I will ask the clerk to take a roll call vote, hearing no discussion on the motion. Or could we just vote by?
Yes.
Oh, I will ask the clerk to call for a vote.
All those in favor?
All's in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Vice President, one more?
Yes, Counsel, or Counsel President Luteri.
The Town Council accept the commitment, the committee reappointment made by Town Council President Luteri of Diane Mackin to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire June 30, 2025.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Belcher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please be signified by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you. And thank you for that, Vice President Ruggiero. Just, I just wanted to put down a discussion of precinct changes. I know these are basically done by the state. And a few people, a handful of people, I guess, got postcards saying that they are now in precinct one, or two, or three, or four. I'll ask our distinguished town clerk to just give a brief explanation as to how many people it affected and how this comes about.
All right. So every 10 years, when the federal census is calculated, the state makes a decision on the towns precincts, causing some to be re-presented. Each precinct cannot have more than 4,000 voters in it. Therefore, some residents have to change their precincts to fit this. In 2020, our 10-year census proved our population to increase from 15,893 to 19,316. It increased our population by 3,423, which affected approximately 348 household precincts to be changed. We had 41 people from precinct one change to precinct five, 53 people from precinct four to precinct six, 93 from precinct six to precinct one, 52 from precinct four to precinct six, 109 from precinct one to precinct two. And I did send everybody on a schedule of the precinct changes. Hopefully, this will not happen again for another 10 years.
And Vice President Ruggiero will be sending a lot of cards to the people that just.
Yeah, precinct six.
Lot, lot of turnover there.
Thank you for that, Denise. Now, I will turn it over to, again, a distinguished writer on the council for recommending a letter to Massport. Counselor Belcher.
All right. So the motion is for the Town Council to accept and sign the attached letter regarding the Massport draft environmental impact report for the runway safety area improvement project on runway 27. This is a runway safety area improvement. It is not a runway extension. The draft environmental impact report came back from Massport. It was open for public comment. They extended the period from the 8th to the 22nd, which gave us time to get a letter in front of the council to sign and send over. The draft environmental impact report didn't mention a lot of Winthrop specific stuff because the scope of the project happens within Boston's boundaries. But it undoubtedly impacts our waterways towards Snake Island and the Elks. So the letter outlines that we understand the importance of this, and it's a safety issue and an FAA mandate. However, it asks for a few things: air quality, monitors, and studies. We ask them to speed up the sound insulation project, and we ask for funding for trees.
Thank you. There was a motion by Counsel Belcher. There was a second by Counsel Ayello. Any discussion on the motion? Again, we thank, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to thank Counsel Belcher for her excellent work on this letter. It was very well-written and pragmatic. You know, we know that this project has to happen. It's an FAA requirement. However, I was pleased to see that she asked for remediation specifically regarding tree funding. Of course, very important to me. But, you know, good for our town. And, you know, so what, of course, pragmatically, you, you noted that this, this has to happen. However, let's ask what they can do to remediate that, the impact that this will have on Winthrop. Thank you again.
Thank you, Counsel Honan. Counsel Ayello?
It echoes the same, same words. You keep doing one after the other. But this was particularly really great work. So thank you.
Vice President Ruggiero?
Thank you, Counsel Belcher. And also just an ask to the clerk to see if we could get this to the transcript. If it passes, to be published as well. I think it's important for the folks that don't watch our meetings, you know, the first and third Tuesday of the month to, to know that, you know, we're doing, we're doing this type of work, and this is important. So if we could do that, if it passes.
Okay.
You have said. I thought you wanted. Counsel Flakat?
I should put on the record that I commend Counsel Belcher. I already thanked her for doing this. But I thought it was extremely well done.
Thank you. And I agree with Vice President Ruggiero. If we could just send this to Carrie Hill, could get it in this week, probably. There was a motion. There was a second by Counsel Ayello. There was a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I oppose, and all the ayes have it. Thank you, Richard. Wow. Public comment. We're back. Yes.
Bill Schmidt, precinct five, not here to talk about trees. But I once at the meeting Monday night of the Rules and Ordnance Committee where they talked about the Ordnance Review Committee. And I think there was a request, I believe, Counsel Munson suggested getting a copy of the legal opinion from KMP that allowed the Charter Committee to be established this year. So I thought that was an important thing that, I hope it should be on the record.
I asked for a few things, but that was one of them, yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. We have it. Yes?
Hi, we're in precinct six. So I, I have a question about how much money, a few things to say, but a question about how much money, even the question of Massport for trees. Can you answer that, or is that?
In the letter?
Yeah.
It, it doesn't ask for a specific dollar amount.
Oh, okay.
This was kind of a pivot to what the actual open public comment period time is for. So hopefully we can.
And I'm also really surprised that some people's votes here trying on the trees, although I'm really glad it came out in favor of keeping the tree, was motivated by a cost of someone threatening to sue. That is just not the right motivation to, to look at the cost like that. Because we, we have two, our two tree committee members sitting next to me, both our groups. We have a whole group of people, you know, on the board of the Winter Love Trees. And we could say, well, we'll file a class action suit because you're going to affect our health. It might affect our health if you take down all these trees and we can't breathe, right? And we're, you know, you're creating these heat islands. I mean, we could have done that, you know, but we didn't. And so I'm just surprised by that being such a big motivator. And I want to end on a really good note. So we are, the Winter Love Trees, the nonprofit group, Winter Love Trees, had tree bags donated. And I put them up and down Pleasant. He's been watering them. We also created an adopt a tree program. We have some participants, and it's started. I have, yeah, we have another commitment from a business in town. I don't want to mention it until he, he, he actually gives me the tree bags, but for another 25 tree bags. And I will, I'm going to approach other people. So it's happening. You know, we're trying to become a, a tree community, get our tree status back from, you know, the tree city status back. And we're on our way. And it's a good thing. And I want to thank everybody who's watering the trees. You know who you are out there. And, and all the donations. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Jacked out precinct three. I want to thank everybody that participated in this democratic process. I appreciate all the work that the people do for the benefit of the trees. And it was a good night for the people of Winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to on Zoom?
We have Karen Chavez? On mute, Karen?
Good evening. Karen Chavez, precinct two. I'm not going to talk about trees. And I'm not going to talk about my disappointment with the Rules and Ordnance Committee meeting last night. But I am going to ask, I'm sorry, Mr. Tell, I am going to ask the town manager about the resurfacing of mechanic courts. I've been asking this all summer. I start with the foundation. I was under the impression that with the foundation, they've given some money to get this done. Last night or tomorrow night is the end of Paxton Rec outside basketball for the season for the summer kids. And these courts still were not resurfaced. And also, I wanted to know who is responsible for the upkeep of these courts. And by that, I mean just trimming of the weeds and keeping the courts free of debris. Just a couple of questions. I don't expect an answer from the town manager tonight, but I would like an answer sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Mike DeLuca?
Mike?
You on mute, Mike?
Mike DeLuca, precinct five, speaking again as a resident in home or in older capacity. I've done my best to craft these remarks with respect to importance of the council's rules under court during public comment. Unfortunately, it has been difficult, but I can only remain silent, especially after working for years and affording three adults with foreign incomes just before the home and town wreck grew up. I followed the Town Council since literally their very first meeting with Council President Luteri contest. In all those years, this was one of the biggest disservices I've seen from this body. Tonight, the Town Council essentially told every property owner in town, we don't care about how the town damages your property. We're not going to do any of it. While the town may be looking to address the ADA issue, the decision tonight doesn't address the issue of a person with a disability coming to my home. The town is going to tell some disability, you can't use the section of the sidewalk because you're different across the street. In 1920, town faced a similar issue in the case of the Valvoline Oil Company versing inhabitants of Winthrop, case law which I sent to this body. In that case, the town was held liable for damage to private property due to its inaction in maintaining a tree. Now, 102 years later, the town is ignoring that court's ruling and made the decision tonight. I am beyond saddened that the council has chosen to ignore both the municipal residents' experience damaged their property that now cannot be repaired as long as that tree stands, and that this body chose to ignore the advice of the town manager who was specifically hired to advise on issues such as this. You've chosen to wait until things get worse to take any action. Since that is the case, I ask you, what would you propose I do when the special services deploys the egress to my home unsafe, yet I cannot legally make necessary repairs due to the roots of the tree? Who's going to pay for a place for my family to stay when this tree inevitably caused damage to my foundation and my home is depleted of inhabitants? These are the real-world issues you chose to ignore tonight. You also ignored that the Town Council received written correspondence from at least two residents who were injured as a result of the conditions this tree has caused. I know this because I received them via public records request. From today forward, you are all responsible for everything that happens as a result of the live industry that has to remain. You are responsible for any and all future damage to my property, anyone else's property, and any injury to anyone walking by that tree. All the time you had to refute the law, you chose to ignore it. And you chose to ignore the will of the residents of the area with no regard to an issue that has caused both property damage and personal injury already. Instead of listening to reason in law, you instead chose to listen to those who spoke loudest and have set a terrible precedent, both for this body and our town. I'm the third generation of my family who resides in this town. The name of my grandfather was a fixture in the wood of Google leaves for decades. My father, who ran local business in multiple locations, and I am dedicating literally my entire adult life in service of this community in one way or another, including 20 years of volunteer service. For the first time in my life, I am saddened and ashamed to live in this town and truly can't fathom the entirety of the potential harm homeowners, the harm true homeowners that has been done by this decision. Lastly, I would like to ask that the town, please take a look at the tree ward's position. I'm not saying this with any ill regard to our tree ward and to risk the best judgment possible we can. Please take a look at the position, the hours and the budget allocated to it. The tree ward's position is becoming more and more important as more responsibilities being placed on it. And I'm not going to publicly say what somebody's salary is, but I ask this really on what, what he is paid to do the job. And we need more. We need, we need to be actually funded this and make it a position that you do the job, you do the job correctly, so that these things aren't coming to the council again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kelly M? You on mute, Kelly?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm a resident at 194 Somerset Ave. The tree is directly inside of my apartment right as I come out. I did write a letter to the board. I can't make the name. Um, I can't make the meetings because I work late. Um, literally just getting in the door now. Um, but I was logging in and I can see that the, um, the issue, we've decided to keep the tree, but to make a crosswalk, which is going to severely limit the amount of parking that's going to be on this street. I'm not about taking trees down. Um, I did read a lot of the reports and from what I can understand, there's, you know, a lot of controversy there. Um, my question to the board and to the people who don't live on this street, um, but yet want to keep the tree, where, where, as, as a, as a renter in, in this, in this, you know, two family that I live in for five years, where am I supposed to put my car when I come home and there's no parking spaces available? With where, there's no driveway available, so, and it's not just me that this affects. So, the people that make the decision, you're affecting other people who contribute to this town financially. So, I, I'd like an answer. Where do you expect me to park when there's no parking?
We don't have an answer. We're not going to comment. It's a, it's a comment period, not a question and answer, but I understand your concern and, uh, from what was told.
I mean, I, I would, I would have to move. I mean, you're, you're, you're making, you're making, if I can't come home at night and find a parking space on my street, you're, you're, you're going, you're going to force me to move. And, and how, and how is the homeowner, you know, how is he supposed to find another, another, you know, renter when, when there's no, there's no parking? I mean, it's just that, you know, that, that in itself, that is an outrage. It's an absolute outrage. And it should, it should not be allowed. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucy DeLuuso.
Hi, this is DeLuuso, precinct five. Obviously, you know I'm upset about the decision to keep the tree. I would like to address some of the comments that were made by councilors that are incorrect. They said that there is no, no report stating this tree is unsafe. That is absolutely false. The tree, past the first report and the third report, both said this tree has an unstable root system and has, has a chance of, uh, well, uprooting within the next year on one of them of falling on my house. Are you going to be paying for me to go stay in a hotel? Are you going to be paying for the emotional distress that I will be caused, my, me and my family, if I have to leave our home? Do you plan on replacing and paying thousands of dollars to replace my front stairs to my home because the sidewalk is being pushed up by the roots of the tree? And I cannot fix it because I cannot cut the roots of the tree due to the damages. And I, there's no way to cut it. You have to take up the entire sidewalk in order to cut the roots to fix the damages to the front of my stairs. It's going to cost me thousands of dollars to fix the damages from this tree. And I've already had a discussion with the town manager in person. And you know what? You're right, you can be expecting a lawsuit because I am going to be suing you.
Thank you, Lucy. Great. Public relations, there are, the committee opens, committee openings on TSAC, Commission for Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations, and the Tree Committee. Any public relations, Council Honan?
No.
Council Munson?
Not at this time.
Council Belcher?
Uh, the public comment period on the draft environmental impact report for the runway safety area project is open through August 22nd. So, if you go to the Massport website, you can find the contact info, just give me feedback for that.
Council DiMarco?
I will be having a, a virtual town hall next month, which I've done in the past. Also, um, you know, at our meeting on the seventh now, um, you know, we'll talk a little bit about Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish holidays coming up in September.
Council Aiello. Council Flakat, Vice President Rujiva. And I would just say again, um, wishing a great year to the students of Winthrop Public Schools, to the teachers, the faculty, the staff, and most importantly, the children. And ask all the residents out there to be mindful that there will be kids all around. And wishing everybody a great Labor Day weekend. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Council Belcher, second by Council Munson. Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.